Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectments meeting of Tuesday, July 24th. My name is Jim Leehan, to my right is my associate, Mr. Palumbo, to my left, Mr. Kelkut, to his left, Mr. Hathaway, our town administrator, and to his left, Susan Jacobson, our executive assistant. Remind everyone that this meeting is being both video and audio taped in accordance with Mass General law of the open meeting laws. If you would stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands hand to hand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hathaway, if you would read the agenda, sir.
Be happy to. Meeting of the Board of Selectment for Tuesday, July 24th, 2018, commencing at 7:00 PM. First order of business, we have animal control officer Hillary Cohen in for a dog hearing. Followed that by the report of the warrants. We have a number of action items, including consideration of street names, member to the Conservation Commission. One item we had on the agenda that we'll not consider tonight was the clerical union contract, but we will have the DPW union contract, discussion about the town government study committee, as well as a request from the Friends of the Norfolk Public Library, annual book and bake sale for April of 2019, and a discussion about legal support for the zoning Board of Appeals. Additional items include Old Town Hall liaison reports, Orange Street Bridge, and then we do have executive session to discuss current litigation with regards to Run and Gun Ranch.
All right, thank you very much. Hillary, please join us.
Absolutely.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
Summer going well, I hope?
It has been very busy.
Peaceful.
Not peaceful. I wish.
I wish, too.
So, I think before we get started, Jack, can you swear everybody in that will be speaking?
I would be happy to.
And hold on one second. Chris, are you going to be speaking?
No.
Are you sure? Because were you the animal control officer in Rentham in 2005?
No.
Excellent.
That's very good, Chris. Detective memory back that far, I'm impressed.
That was interesting. So Hillary Cohen, do you promise to tell the whole, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
I have Robin and Anthony Biscaya. Raise your right hand, you promise to tell the whole, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Thank you.
So I'm going to keep this as short as possible because I think we actually might have a solution here. The hearing authority has not had a nuisance dog hearing since the laws changed in the animal control acts of 2012. MGL 140 subsection 157 states that the hearing authority may issue any resolution to ameliorate the situation in a nuisance dog situation. This is unlike a dangerous dog situation where the hearing authority would have to choose from a list. In this situation, you may choose anything, there's no restrictions. So your, the hearing authority's job is to see if the complaint rises to the task of being a nuisance dog, and if so, how do we abate the nuisance? So I'm going to pass out a copy of the law to you guys because, and I've highlighted the corner sections of where it applies to a nuisance dog, and where it's not highlighted that is a dangerous dog, you don't have to even look into that. Animal Control has had interactions with the Biscaya's prior to my employment, which I believe was 24 years ago, it may be 25 at this point. And to give a record of the animal control incidences, this is, those are only animal control incidences that were logged through our PMET system, down at the police department.
Oh, thank you.
There are over 20 documented incidences of dog interactions with the public in the form of being at large, dogs being struck by cars, showing aggressive behavior, killing of livestock on two accounts, biting of a child, biting of another dog. One of the hardest things as an animal control officer to instill in a, in a dog owner is to make sure that they restrain their dogs. The last thing I want to do is notify a dog owner that their dog has been killed, and in this situation, I have had to do that. I have cited them routinely over the years, and although they pay their citations in a very timely manner, there was no proposed resolution to the problem prior to coming to a nuisance dog hearing. Hopefully, the hearing authority has had the opportunity to read my initial incident packet that was provided, although I did not include all the incidences through history. I wanted to get the hearing on the table first. I do have all the incidences ever logged in the police department here tonight to enter in. In most recent complaints, the common theme has been loose dogs in the neighborhood trespassing, pooper-scooper violation, destruction of property by digging on people's yards, and as one reporter states, showing aggressive behavior towards his own dog upon his property. I did receive an email regarding a possible resolution yesterday from the Biscaya family stating they are currently that their dogs are staked out outside upon their property. This distresses me as long as, because in the past, with an aggressive, a dog that has aggressive behavior, tying them up can escalate that behavior. However, also enclosed in the email was mention of an electronic fence being installed. I am in favor of this, as long as the invisible fence encompasses the property around the household, and that the fence is not brought all the way up to the street, which this property is set way off of the roadway, so I don't think that that would be a problem. And I think it would be cost prohibitive to take the fence all the way to the street through the woods. So I'm just going to do three or four words about each and every incident report from the beginning to the end. Some of these were prior to my employment. 1994, I had two incident reports, well, the police department did. One was a dog bite, the Biscaya's dog bit a child in the arm two times. The second incident was the dog was picked up by police after being at large and caught by a neighbor and returned back to the Biscaya's. In 1995, I had one dog incident, a dog was struck by a car after running loose. Again, I was not present for that incident, that was prior to my employment. In 1998, I had an incident of a dog found by a neighbor after running loose, and apparently the dog was hit by a car, however, those two incidences, it may be referencing the prior incident of the other dog being hit by a car, because there were other issues between neighbors at that point as well. In 2004, I had six incidences. Number one, loose dog. Two, loose dog and hit by car, that dog perished. Number three, lost dog, reported by the owners because it was running loose. Four, their dogs were, killed a rooster, being at large. Number five, another loose dog complaint. Six, loose dogs, loose dog complaint, killing chickens, chasing children on bikes, and the defecation law. In 2015, I had one incident, Rentham animal control officer picked up the loose dogs in their town and came into the station to find out where they lived. Wasn't you? 2006, there were four incidences. One was one of their dogs was limping in the road. Number two was loose dog complaint. Three, loose dogs and destruction of property, i.e. rummaging through a neighbor's trash. Number four, a complaint of loose dogs. In 2007, I had one incident regarding the dogs, and it was a loose dog report by the 2008, I had three incidences, loose dog picked up by animal control and returned to owner. Upon arrival, there was another dog that was injured. Second one was loose dog, animal control retrieved it and returned it to owner, and the third was a phone call from the Biscaya's regarding paying a citation. In 2014, there's quite a gap in here from 2008 to 2014. There was an incident at Healthy Pet Supply where Anthony Biscaya had brought his dog to work, he was the owner of Healthy Pet Supply, and his dog attacked a customer's Pomeranian. This, I do not have an incident report for, however, I was able to reclaim an email that I'd sent to the animal inspector, Chris Weider, to go and quarantine the dog, and it describes the nature of what happened. The reporter in that situation says that when she walked into the store, the yellow lab grabbed her Pomeranian by the throat and shook it. So that dog was placed on a quarantine. 2016, I had one incident of a loose dog on Marshall Street, and I helped Robin grab her dogs and get them back home. 2017, I had five incidences, loose dogs showing aggression upon private property per complainant. Second one, yellow lab showing aggression to dog on private property by complainant, and it was also noted in my report that when I sent a citation, I also wrote a letter saying that if you have an unaltered animal, there are further steps to making sure that animals restrained. In other words, it's not neutered or spayed. The yellow lab that they currently have is, is not altered. Three, loose dog complaint. Four, another loose dog complaint. I issued another citation and a temporary restraining order. And five, for that year, I filed for a restraining order, I believe it was during the holiday season, and I only have a 14-day window to have a temporary restraining order made permanent by the board. And I think it fell during the holidays, and it expired. It was never acted upon. 2018, I have one incident so far of loose dogs in neighbor, in the neighbor's yard, defecation law. I have dealt with the Biscaya's many times in the past, and we have a great working relationship. The only thing I have not been able to successfully have them do is implement a way to keep their dogs safe on their own property at all times. And it's been determined through many of the police reports that, in their own words, at several different incidences, they felt that their dogs should be running free, and that they should be loose to get exercise, not to harass the, the neighborhood or anything like that, but they truly believed that their dogs needed to be exercised in that way. This department has come to an impasse regarding proper care and restraint of these dogs. Now, before I finish, before judging too quickly, this is 25 years of history, obviously these are not all the same dogs. This is several different dogs over history. I do believe this is not a dog issue. I do believe it is a lack of supervision, structured training, socialization, and restraint. And I have all the police reports to hand out to you guys.
Questions for Hillary?
I don't mind.
Jeff?
Yeah, I don't have any questions at this point, just comment, I mean, I'm struck at the sheer volume of complaints. So clearly, that's abnormal, but I guess I'll delay any further questions.
And the only remedy I have is to issue citations, send mail, talk to everybody, and it's just, I don't want to return another dog home like I've returned a dog previously. And also, in our litigious ways today, we've actually had dog owners that have extensive records like this, and their dogs have gotten loose, caused a motor vehicle accident, and those motor vehicle insurance companies have actually requested my reports, and then in turn sued the dog owner for the damages in the motor vehicle accident. So I don't want anybody to get involved in any kind of litigation like that, the Biscaya's or anybody.
Well Hillary, you have a, you have a memo from, from the parties dated tomorrow, which I guess makes it reasonably current.
It was dated yesterday, the day I-
Unless we're going backwards, this one says July 25th. But anyway, can you, no, it's, it's okay. I, I didn't mean to be, I wasn't, my apologies, it wasn't meant to be facetious. How do you feel about what is stated in the email?
I applaud them for restraining their dogs at this point, and I agree with the Biscaya's that the dogs, long-term, should not be tethered or tied or staked out in the yard. An invisible fence, I think, is an appropriate step. The one thing that I would ask from the board is to inquire whether it's being professionally installed or the homeowners are installing it. If it's being professionally installed, usually that company will train your dogs to that fence. I'm comfortable with that. If it's being installed by the homeowner, I would like a animal behaviorist trainer, somebody to train that dog to that fence, or just check off to say, yes, these dogs will stay behind this fence. I mean, there's always the freak accident if you lose power, or if, if, if a dog has such a high prey drive, it may not work, but I think they're so, so far off the roadway that they're not going to have a lot of interaction with, you know, the public, as long as they're not allowed, allowed to go to the curb. And I, I will say that the, all of the newer complaints, these dogs know where to go when they get loose, and that's their first stop. This is all from the same complainant. In every complaint, he has provided surveillance photos, videos. He's truly worried about his dog's health and safety. I believe it's a Maltese, so.
Do we have folks in the audience that are here for this hearing that would like to speak? Please, yeah.
Come on up.
You need to grab the microphone, or, or take a seat, please.
Hillary said we were sitting up here.
Please feel free, sure. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Cohen. As Hillary stated, that sounded like a lot of incidents, but we've had a dozen different dogs. The ones we have presently, I think they're five and three years old?
Six.
Six and three.
Six and three, yep.
So the issue right now is not, Hillary stated that it's, you know, an ownership and a restraint issue over the long term, but I'll say this, when we moved to Norfolk, there were no leash laws. So in those days, we just opened the door, and neighbors never complained, but the neighbors have changed over the years. Now we have people that have their own animals that are more sensitive than in the old days before all those houses were built in the neighborhood. Having said that, we, you brought up incidents of dogs biting and fighting. The, the dogs we currently have, the only incident was in my store, and it was because the lady that had a dog like on a harness-
She actually had a puppy.
-and decided to take it and put it down, and it attacked my dog. Of course, her interpretation is, you know, my dog bit hers, but my dogs generally not aggressive, they've never had any fights with any other dogs. They're both playful, they like to explore, and that's why they run off. They're looking, they know there's other dogs out there, that's why they run off. And we try, we immediately, if they ever run off, we immediately go walking and calling, and then if they don't come, then we get a, Robin jumps in her car, and as Hillary said, we know-
Oh, we've done roundups together.
We, so we're very responsive, and we, we do take responsibility. Unfortunately, these guys are really sneaky.
We give copies of everything.
And, and they're strong, you know, they run right through my legs and knock me on my back, because they just have that urge, and, and then they don't listen anymore. And Hillary thinks that an electric fence would be a good solution, and I disagree, because what happens, or what can happen, is that if your dog has a shock collar, which I think is not a humane way to deal with the situation, what if it does get out because it's excited and it's a coyote or another dog, then it can't get back in? So now you, you've created a different problem that we also would have to deal with. So I don't believe an electric fence is the way to go. And what we've, what we've done is, we've already bought all the materials, we're about halfway through putting up a physical fence. We've got all, all the posts, all the corner posts to support the weight, and then all the members that are going to go in between. We were hoping to finish it this weekend, so we could come in here and tell you, yes, we've got a fence in itself and have pictures, but the weather hasn't cooperated, so you can't set cement, you know, in, in, what do you call, the sonotubes, you know, if, if it's raining, the cement won't set. So we, we're still in the process of doing the last one, and then by this coming weekend, we will have, and that's on the exterior when we go out. In the meantime, the first resort was for us to prevent them from getting out of the house to begin with unless we take them out on leash. And so what we did is, we, we now have a double gate system. On our side door, where faces our driveway, we put up a baby gate, which is about four feet high, well, maybe three, three and a half.
No, probably three.
But they will not go past that. And then there's a buffer area before the door. So now, every time we go out, we only open one, close that, and then open the other. So that's worked fairly well so far. In the, that's on the side door. On the back door, we put in a, a physical metal gate at the bottom of the steps, so that even if they manage to get out the door, they can't get out, and they're stuck on the steps. And then where we let them out, so we can go play frisbee, is, you know, Robin right up. If we go out to play frisbee, or throw a ball, or just let them run around, get some exercise, we will have the physical containment, and it's high enough so that there's no way they can jump over that. So we're still, we're still working on it, but I know in the past, as Hillary stated, we've said, well, we want our dogs to run around. Well, we have enough of a big backyard where they can get a lot of exercise and run around, but stay within our property. So that is my solution, we're already implementing it, and if that should ever fail, then we'd, we'd need to consider, I also, Robin and I both don't think shocking a dog is a humane way to deal with their boundless energy. So, but I, I did, in fact, already buy a shock collar, and it has a remote, and I'll start training my own dog, where if they ever even think, if they know where the gates are, there's two gates, and if I see them heading towards the gates, I will put the collar on them, and I'll train them, like, don't go near that gate, you know? So I don't want to resort to that, I think the physical fence is enough, but if it keeps happening, I understand, then we have to do something else. And we're, we're ready to go down that path if necessary, but we'd like a chance to implement the physical barrier first without shocking our dogs. From personal experience, my, my brother had a shock collar on his dog, and my observation was that the dogs become psychotic. They don't understand what they've done wrong, they're getting zapped, and, you know, unless you, like you, like she said, unless a professional trains them, and you put up flags, and you have, you know, an electric fence, I, the dogs we've had previously were always pretty good under voice control, but these guys, we, we, if we take them outside, we have them on a leash. And as you know, with the, the wind conservation land, there's a lot of trails, we like to go for walks, and in the old days, the dogs would just walk with us, they'd run off, come back when we called them. I can't do that anymore. We take them for a walk on the trails now, they're on a leash, and that doesn't happen as often as it used to because my knees are shot, my back is shot, and they're strong dogs. But we'd like to contain them within our own property, make sure they still get enough exercise, and that's what I see as, as the ideal solution, both for us, for Hillary, and for all of our neighbors that are affected. Our dogs are current dogs, the only incident was in the pet store, but I had that place for over five years, and every day I would bring one or the other dog. And customers would come in because their kids wanted to play with my dog, and customers would bring their dogs in because their, their dogs wanted to play with my dogs. And we never really had a problem. Over five years, we're talking about, that's 1,500, 2,000 occasions where people would come in multiple times a day even. And so I think my dogs are pretty well behaved. They do get excited, that's, that's inevitable, when they meet somebody new, and some kids are scared, and maybe they're, even though there's no true danger to them in their mind, they're terrified, and I don't want that to happen. That's why we don't want them to run around the neighborhood, because, you know, somebody might be walking their kid, or some kid might be riding his bike, so we don't want to have that cause any problems. So the, the first choice for us is that physical barrier, and that's what we'd like to have approved by you guys.
Okay. Hillary, you're nodding in the affirmative.
As you guys have all seen in the past, I've preferred physical fencing over invisible fencing. I'm confused due to the correspondence from yesterday, as far as an invisible fence being-
I, I didn't mention invisible.
Oh, it wasn't?
Yeah, it doesn't say that.
Okay. I must have misread that. If, if they're going to do a physical fence, just-
Yep, we've started the physical, yep.
Talk about, you know, how high it's going to be, and-
Right. Well, she, she did write on there, I recall clearly, that the fencing we bought is specifically for animal containment.
Okay.
It says right on the package, that's why we bought it. And it's high enough where I know there's no way my dogs can jump through it.
It's four feet.
And now it becomes an issue of like securing the fence, which we're in the process of doing. And I'd like you to come by, when we're done, I'll give you a call, leave you a message or whatever, and you're welcome to come by and either approve or tell us no, you've got to change this or that, we'd be glad to listen and follow your instructions.
Now that, the fence would go around the whole household?
No. What we, we, we really only use the back door, and the dogs really only go in the backyard.
Okay.
Our front door is hardly ever used, almost never.
Right.
The side door is used when we receive deliveries, it faces the driveway, or if we're taking them to the vet, then we got to take them out the side door. But that's the one where the corridor has a baby gate, and it, it will not be in the fenced-in area. The fenced-in area is where we take them to get exercise, or where they go do their business outdoors.
Okay.
The side doors strictly only for taking them to the vet, or to make sure, like if FedEx shows up, we have that gate in the corridor-
Okay.
-to keep them from even getting to the door. So that's, that's what I'd like to see, and-
I guess, I, I mean, my only concern is that, I know that I've brought the dogs back a couple of times, and the dogs had escaped through the side door, but it sounds like they've taken some steps to try to, kind of like a Sally Port, second line of defense before, you know-
Correct. And we'll, we'll maintain that even when we're finished. We'll make sure that there's a double, there's a buffer zone with double gate security.
Okay.
Gentlemen, comment? Kevin?
Given the reoccurring nature of some of the issues that have compounded over the years, are we able to put a condition on our decisions to a timetable for the fence to be completed?
Under Mass law, you guys can rule upon anything as to how and when, or if. The one thing you would, you would need to do as a condition is to make a decision on whether this dog is a nuisance dog or nuisance dog situation or not.
That would be my only comment.
Jeff?
Could, could I make a statement? I, I just wanted to mention, the only reason the dogs got out was because there was an open door. They have never run off their run, that's never been an issue. It's, it's human error in doors being left open. So we think we've satisfactorily addressed those issues by having the baby gate on our main side entrance, and then also having a gate at the bottom of the back store, back stairs, where we let the dogs off on the run. I mean, that was the cause of the dogs getting out, and we think we've addressed that, but we wanted to go one step further and just have a fenced-in area. Although, I think you'd be surprised how long their, their tether is, and that we do play ball and frisbee, and, and they, they do get a lot of exercise. It's not a short leash, and it's not the ideal setup because they can't go out together and play together. So that's what we'd like to do when the fence is done.
Jeff?
Yeah, I think something related to, you know, what Kevin had brought up, so, you know, a date in time, which would be helpful to Officer Cohen, so that she knows that along the way, there may be some communication, maybe site visits, but ultimately, as far as this board is concerned, and what we'd like you to agree to, if my colleagues are in agreement, is a specific- But ultimately, as far as this board is concerned, and what we'd like you to agree to, if my colleagues are in agreement, is a specific date, whether that's ten days out, or something like that, where we know, and the public knows, that the things are in place that we agree on. So, so, you know, I echo Kevin's concern, my colleague. And in terms of any period of time for follow-up review, whether it's a week, two weeks later. So that we know that there's some subsequent communication, a visit by Officer Cohen with you, so that, you know, once again, it's just another opportunity, how's it working? You know, what are the issues that may have come up, hopefully none, but...
Yeah, as far as the timeframe, weather permitting, I understand we're gonna get the deluge on Wednesday. So that will probably, you know, work stoppage for a day, possibly two. So the weather this week has not cooperated. But, you know, if it improves, I hope to finish the, this weekend coming up. But as a little bit of a buffer in case, you know, we, I don't want to be punished because we couldn't work fast enough, and nobody knows what the weather's gonna be.
Absolutely.
So I would say, give us two weeks, and then I will contact Hillary and have her come by and inspect. And if she makes any suggestions, if she sees any weakness in our plan, and we'll, we'll follow those suggestions. We'll do whatever it takes, we don't want to lose our dogs, we don't want to have any trouble with our neighbors. And, but we, we do want our dogs to be able to be dogs, you know? And they're not, we love all kinds of dogs. And the little guys, they're, they're more like house dogs, these guys are big, they need to run around. They, they get, you know, anxious, and, you know, they come and sit and stare at you, and it's like, come on, I wanna play, you know? So we respond to that, we try to treat our dogs, they are like our family, you know? But when these issues come up, and, and they are repeated, there comes a point where we decided we need to take action, and we need to do it now. Especially once we got the notice that we were gonna have to explain to you how we're gonna tackle the situation. So, like I said, the proposal from our side is, what, give us a chance to put in the physical fence. And give us, you know, beyond the two weeks where she's gonna come in and take a look, give us any period you think is satisfactory. And it won't change, it's not like we're gonna go back. But, you know, if there's no incidents six months down the road, say, then I'd say that the system's proven itself. I don't know how Hillary feels about that, but...
Jim, can I just ask a question or two?
Sure.
Just so we don't get too far down the path and then realize we're not going in the right direction. I know you talked about the fence was a animal containment fence, or the packaging setting. But I thought maybe if you could just describe it, if, you know, maybe the height of the fence, the material, the, is, is it see-through? You know, are there slats that see-through, is there, is it a stockade fence? I mean, just give us a little more of a description of what the, the fence is.
The type of fencing it is?
Yeah.
It's, it's wire, and it has a, a green coating. So it's like, we don't want it to be, we don't want to get chain link because that, that's just ugly. It doesn't belong, we're in the woods, you know? So the fencing we bought is almost indistinguishable from the background, because it's, it's a green wire mesh. And the squares are probably, I would say, three-inch squares, there's no way any of our dogs are gonna fit through that. And we're securing it so that they can't crawl out from under it, they can't, the, the weak points would be the gates. So that's where we're kinda concentrating, making sure that, that the gates are truly secure. The fence itself, I'm, I'm not worried about this. And, you know, the, the, the physical presence of the gates we're using now, and the fence, when we're done with the fencing, they will know that you can't crash through that, even if they try, so they'll run up to it, but they won't even try to go through it. It becomes a psychological deterrent.
How tall is it?
It's four feet, forty-eight inches.
Four feet high?
Yeah.
Are you putting it into the ground at all? Cause I, I have a golden lab, labs are diggers. Labs dig. Are you putting it into the ground to any degree, a couple of inches or anything, cause, so they can't dig under it?
We hadn't thought about that, putting it into the ground.
But we're gonna have stakes.
We do have...
Well, you know what I'm referencing, Hillary?
Correct.
Dogs dig, I mean, I have a golden lab, and, and, you know, I, I understand.
I was not diggers, but it's not out of the question, I know what you mean.
Well, I just, I just want to be sure that it's low enough in the ground that they can't dig. If they see any opening at all, they'll dig it, they'll dig and try to get underneath the fence if they want to go. I, I'm just curious, it's, the male is not neutered?
Correct.
Are you breeding the dog, or?
No.
Cause males that are not neutered roam, it's their nature. I've had dogs my whole life, and if, if you have a male that is not neutered, he will roam, if he's given the opportunity, it's just his nature. As you say, they're dogs. We can't require that, but I, I was just curious if you were breeding the dog.
No, we don't, we never did, and we don't plan on breeding, we just like them the way God made them.
He does.
And I think it's not humane to, you know, change their sex organs. I, I like them the way they are.
Okay.
It, it affects their temperament.
It's a personal view, sir, I, I respect your views, yeah?
Right, but I'm just, I, I grew up in Portugal. Nobody's dogs get neutered, you know? And so when I found out here in America, it's very common. Well, the female, we have to, we don't want to end up with, you know, you know, a bunch of puppies. And, but with the male, we've had other males that also weren't neutered. And we've never really had any...
No, I'm not judging, I, it's a very personal view, so I respect your views, yeah?
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions on the fence? I mean, we have corner...
No, as, as long as it is...
No, very sturdy.
I mean, four feet is more than ample, I mean, most dogs won't leap that. If Hillary is, if I may just, sir, if, we always look to Hillary's guidance on this.
So on this fence, I, you have corner posts, I understand that. How long of a span is it between each post?
Well, we thought we would put the metal spikes that are gonna just hold the fence up in between the posts, cause it's fifty feet.
Are those T-posts?
What's that?
Are they T-posts, the kind you jam into the ground?
I guess.
Yeah, and, and they go into the ground about a foot, and then they have little hooks that the fence goes on.
Okay.
And if, if you think it's necessary, I mean, I, I hold off on doing that because it's a lot of work. But if you come in and you tell us you need to do something to prevent digging, we can, we can actually, you know, we, there's enough rocks all over the place. We can put decent-sized rocks all along the perimeter to keep them from digging under.
Okay. I'm just worried about the, the stability of the fence, as to how far the posts are put out in case the dogs challenge the fence, see something, try to climb over to get it. And that's where the rigidity, why I was asking how far the...
It's in flux, I thought that ten feet apart would be okay. But what we see is that the fence kinda wobbles, that's too far, so we're gonna cut that in half, we're gonna go every five feet, we're gonna have a metal stake on the ground.
You're gonna have a post every five feet?
The metal...
Not, not the wooden, pressure-treated.
You're gonna have the metal stake in, every five feet.
Yes.
Right.
And the posts are how far, the permanent posts are?
Uh, well, they're not permanent, you can pull them up, but, but they're in the ground.
So is the whole fence, just these stakes?
No, 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 no.
No, the corner, the corner posts are pressure-treated, and they're in cement.
And how far apart are they?
It, it's about fifty feet fence, fifty feet from the house, fifty feet this way, and fifty feet back. And the back of the house is one side.
Permanent posts are the ones in the corners, the cornerstone.
Correct, yep.
But those metal stakes, there's no way the dogs can get through that, because they're, they're in the ground a good part.
No, I know the stakes you're talking about, yeah?
I think we can evaluate that, because I had the same concern you're leading up to. Is that gonna be enough? Maybe we need to put one halfway...
Is it gonna be strong enough, or a couple more posts halfway down?
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, we could do that, too.
Okay.
So, tell us your recommendation.
So my recommendation would not include two weeks. I really think putting your time and effort and thoughts into the plan, you're gonna need a month. Because you're gonna come up with some things that you realize, like, like you guys are seeing already. You might need stronger materials down the long sides, you know, a third of the way down, half the way down, two-thirds of the way down, to really make that fence strong. There are other ways, instead of putting a ton of rocks in your yard, I know a lot of dogs like to eat rocks, not, I had a dog that was a, a rock eater. If there is a digging issue, we can also address that with, you know, timber, two-by-four landscape ties. You can attach them to the fence, stake them, drill them into the ground. I mean, as long as the Biscaya's are willing to contain their dogs, and I love the fact that it will be a physical fence. But if there are escape attempts, even after we're all satisfied here, that they keep up with finding ways to make it dig-proof, jump-proof. I'm always an open, open ear, they can call anytime, I have tons of different resources on, on how to stop dogs from getting loose.
Okay. Gentlemen, you're comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Jeff?
Yeah, I am, I mean, we have another meeting, August fourteenth.
We do.
So, you know, a month out is, you know, that's, that's too soon, so we wouldn't basically get to that one month until after our next meeting, which may be okay.
Yeah.
I mean, just...
When I suggested the two-week period, again, there's a lot of variables, like the weather, and Hillary suggested a month.
Uh-huh.
That's better, because that gives us more time if we decide, well, this isn't good enough, we can make changes. You know, prior to the, some deadline, you know? So I think that, I appreciate you giving us a, a little more time.
Sure.
Would it be reasonable to ask that there be some type of status, you know, updates to Hillary, maybe?
Yeah. What I'd suggest is that, you know, while it's in progress, that if she wants to stop by, she's certainly welcome to. But when we think we're just about there, I'll call Hillary and ask her to, and that should be within the next couple of weeks. And I'd like to get her feedback, and then we'll implement anything else that she suggests, such as, you know, if we need to put some, not railroad ties, but whatever, you know, along the ground. Digging, digging's never been an issue, but then they've never faced a fence that they try to get out of. We have chickens, they, we had dogs previously that I know attacked some neighbor's chickens. But these guys, they're, our chickens roam free. And the dogs, they're all family, you know, they've never attacked other animals or any birds. We have wild turkeys running around, too, and the dogs will bark at them, scare them off, but they've never really physically attacked anything.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we have a plan, so I don't think there's a need for this board to act in terms of designating this as a nuisance dog at this point in time.
Okay.
And we'll look, if we're in agreement, we'll, we'll look to have you get back to us when this is all complete, and hopefully it'll... It sounds like you're making a very sincere effort, and we appreciate that, sir.
Well, that's...
We're all dog lovers, good or bad.
We, we wanna head it off, we don't, I mean, it's gotten to the point where the repetition of the infringements, we, we can't have that going on. We don't want to take up Hillary's time and resources. We've lost a dog, like she said, that got hit by a car, that's one I said, this is a good idea.
Well, you're on, you're on North Street, which is a heavily traveled road.
That's a heartbreaker, you know?
You know, you don't want a dog loose like that, so, and I understand the old days, but they are the new days, whether you like them or we don't like them. But, you know, we do have a leash law, and, and we do have folks that have a right to not have their yards intruded upon by someone else's dog, so we do appreciate you taking this action. Any other?
Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Just, I would just, I guess, question if, you know, if you, we are coming to a resolution here, which is great. I think, you know, reading the law, you may want to still deem this a nuisance dog.
I agree.
And, you know, the good news is, we have a plan in place here. I'm just kinda reading that section.
Yeah, I read it, yeah.
And there's no ramifications on deeming a, a dog a nuisance dog, unlike the dangerous dog hearings. Yes, it's, there is a classification towards these dogs currently, but as I've stated before, and talked with the Biscaya's, again, this really, I don't want to play too heavily on that this is about the dogs, it, it wasn't. It was about restraint and control, and just being able to keep track of the dogs.
Okay. So your recommendation is, is that we do vote to designate this a nuisance dog, and that you will get back to us in terms of the containment process?
That would be my recommendation. Therefore, if something doesn't come through, we're not back at square zero.
And I see nothing in this law, as I read it, that, that designation causes any further harm to the animal, I guess is another way to say it.
It does not. Unlike the dangerous dog where, you know, there's insurance ramifications, there is not in this.
Okay.
So, are we, are we talking about one dog, or two dogs?
I would consider both, since both of them have been loose on multiple occasions.
Okay. Do I have a, do I have a motion, gentlemen? Dog's name are, is it Aussie?
Mm-hmm.
And Deuce?
Yes.
Yes, I move that, uh, two dogs, Aussie and Deuce, under the ownership of Robin and Anthony, Anthony Biscaya? Biscaya? Be deemed nuisance dogs per Mass General Law, Part One, Title Twenty, Chapter One Forty, Section One Fifty-seven.
Second.
A friendly amendment, and that Hillary report back in terms of the containment policy in thirty days?
Absolutely.
But before that, right, she's gonna report back during our next meeting on the fourteenth?
Well, if, if we are giving them a month to complete the project, that would be tough to do.
Well, you want a plan in two weeks, and then a implementation in a month?
That's what I thought we landed on there, was that we'd get an update on the status and the review of the project in progress at our next meeting.
Whatever, your pleasure.
That's fine.
Okay, I'll modify my motion to suggest that on or before the thirteenth of August, which is one day prior to our next meeting, that there be discussion and a review with Officer Cohen of the status of the project.
You want us to come back and give you an update?
No, that's strictly between...
I think just Hillary would be fine.
Yeah.
No, I'll just send you guys correspondence.
Okay.
Perfect.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry you had to be here.
Thank you.
Well, we are too, very sorry that our dogs have been a problem.
Thank you, Hillary.
Yes, thank you, Hillary.
Okay, Mr. Hathaway.
One second, just cleaning up my desk here.
We're on the warrants.
We have three, four warrants to report on.
Well, I will move to approve the warrants of July tenth, the amount of two million, two hundred and twenty thousand, oh ninety, decimal ninety-one, and a hundred and fifty dollars, and warrant of seven twenty-six, nine nine four, point one five, which I signed. Kevin, I believe you signed the seventeenth.
Sure did.
If you want to, so are we moving on the tenth?
So moves.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we accept the warrants from seven seventeen, twenty eighteen, in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, nine seventy-two, decimal forty-three.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have some action items, we had some street names for Lakeland Farms, and some correspondence in your office, in your packet. Police chief had some concerns with some of those names, they were similar to other names in town. Also caused us to kinda revisit the selectmen's policy, which we put in your packet as well. The selectmen's policy on street names is that the name, try to honor the town of Norfolk's rich history. A name may be selected for an individual of local historical significance, place or event. Name may honor a local veteran who serves in the defense of our country. Or the name may honor an individual who has demonstrated excellence, courage, exceptional service to the citizens of the town of Norfolk. Or the name may honor, may be in honor of a national historic figure or event. So having kinda revisited that policy, and also that the fact, the names that were suggested by the applicant were not in compliance with that, and also had some issues with the chief, I'd like to suggest that I'll go back to the requister and... the requister and ask them to try and follow the policy, and we can make some suggestions to them. I can work with the historical committee and some other folks that we can make some suggestions for trying to come into compliance with the policy. Of course, you know...
I'm in agreement. I, I know one of the names that they suggested is very similar to a street we currently have.
Yeah, there was a, Tall Pines, and there's, there's a number of Pine Roads, and Chuck says he doesn't want to have another Pine Road in town.
Makes sense.
Pine something or other.
So, we'll table this, and they'll come back?
Okay.
Reable?
Yep.
Okay.
We have a letter of interest from Alexandra Frere, young lady, at least in my mind, that would like to be a member of the Conservation Commission. She's a University of Vermont graduate, also attended law school, graduated from law school, and is a practicing attorney, and actually, and grew up in Norfolk, and is just moving back, so.
Is Alexandra here? Does she know what she's getting in for?
I personally haven't met her, but I know she has attended some of the CONCON meetings.
Okay. It's a difficult, it's a tough board to be on. We're grateful for anyone that volunteers, so Alexandra, thank you. We appreciate, appreciate your stepping forward. Do I have a motion?
I move to appoint Alexandra Frere to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, that term will expire in three years. I think that, we just had a expiration. We have the DPW Union contract in your packet, and we have a redline version. It's Mr. Bragdon. Maybe he could join us.
Yeah, there are a couple of changes to this, Scott.
Yes. So, there, there's a few minor changes. The previous contract was brought before you, had not yet been approved by the DPW Union. This contract, as it's in front of you, has been approved by them, so if you approve it as is, it will be signed by us, and then, and then, um... I can go through the redline version, kind of let you know where the changes are.
Did everybody get a chance to take a look at it?
Yes.
Okay. I think we've all seen it, Scott, so...
There's no changes in pay or, or working conditions and that kind of stuff in these changes. The Article Four, on page four at the bottom, as I'm sure you're aware, the United States Supreme Court just had a finding that it is no longer legal to collect dues from individuals who do not wish to be part of the union. That wording was in this contract. It's not in the, in the clerical contract we're working on, but it is in this one. So, I took the wording out, and they have agreed to that. So, that's the first change, and that, that's both on page four and page five. The next set of changes are on page nine. Up at the top, it was, it's clearly, it's just a correction of the time. At the bottom, I, this is a, was a MOU that was signed, was signed before I got here, so it's, I don't know, seven, eight years old at this point, where the individuals that are doing the second, third shift, flushing annually, get a stipend of an extra hundred dollar, fifteen hours. So, it's already in place. It's already been signed by the town. This is just merely putting in the contract.
Okay.
Which is where it should be. The call-in callback section has been rewritten, and you've already seen the significant parts of that. So, we have limited the number of callbacks that, that the members can get in an evening, and in exchange for that, we've reduced the call-in from two hours to one hour, so that they would get extra time if they're called in an hour, hour work. So, I think it's more than a fair deal for the town and for the taxpayers. We just made a couple of clarif- clarification in there. The call-in, we received two hours' pay for that, for that hour period they're called in. That was already agreed to, just wasn't clarified in the contract. And in the callback section, we just added, some different departments, such as the transfer station, have different hours. So, their call-in time would be different. So, it doesn't, it's not six o'clock, and it would be a different time. So, that's really all that, that says. And then, it's in here a couple of times. The union, as we put it in here, is that all double time provisions are in place. There is, in the contract, it spells out when and after how many hours a individual gets double time. And so, this doesn't change any of that. It's just in there again. The next change was on page twenty-five.
Page eleven.
Did I miss one?
No, that's next, I think, on your list, is the bottom of eleven.
Oh, okay. So, this, yep, the, this is wording that's in the current contract. We had taken it out in negotiations. They asked that we put it back in. All it says is that when Bob does reviews, if he comes up a new form, he's going to work with the union in the new form. That, that's, that's no problem. He's been using paragraph kind of forms rather than a specific form, so it really hasn't come into play, which is why we took it out initially. But if they want to, you know, it's fine. They have involvement in looking at the form. It's not a big deal. Page twenty-five, use of equipment. It said superintendents. We now have other management that are not called superintendents, so we want to make sure that this paragraph covers them. So, we've changed it from superintendents to management. So, it allows limited use by management, you know, it allows them to, to hop on a...
Did you want to cover that one?
Yeah, it's just a correction. This is a correction.
Yeah.
So, that, that is a change, you know, in our favor. So, that's, that's really it. There were no changes to the, any of the pay sections. The salary charts are the same as what you saw, the, the grades. They asked for some additional changes that we did not agree to, so they're not in this contract.
Everything else is the same as we reviewed before?
Yes, everything else is the same.
Do I have a motion to approve the contract with the DPW?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nicely done. I, I know how hard you worked on some of the language clarifications, so...
Thank you.
Nicely done. Do you want us to sign the non-redline version?
So, yeah, so you'll, there's a non-redline version that, do you have them, sir? Or they have them?
They each have one, so.
Yep, so if you guys will sign those.
I have an extra one that somebody marked theirs out.
To the union to sign tomorrow.
And thank, thank the union for, as always, I, I, we have great relationships with our unions and...
As just a mode of update, we're, we're very close on the clerical.
Thank you, sir.
We just wanted some additional time with vacations and stuff to reread it, make sure that everything's as we think is.
Yes, sir.
That's for you.
Thank you, sir. Get you finished up with the pen. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I just remembered to shut mine off.
Good work, Scott.
Well, Jack helped.
I'm glad we got that misunderstanding fixed.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Scott, you want to talk about Old Town Hall while you're here?
Sure. So, I asked for some time before the board to talk about the Old Town Hall. I am the human resource manager, but I do a lot of other things for the town, and one of those is liability, insurances, and I deal with all of the claims, et cetera, that come in from the outside, and do work on some of the safety issues in town. And that will continue on with the new laws that were recently signed on. So, that's why I'm here. As you know, the town recently voted at town meeting not to sell the property. I understand that. But the building itself is, is deteriorating. It's sitting there. Facilities felt that it got to a point that it was necessary to empty the remaining files. There are boxes of files and stuff in there, which are now in a locally held storage unit, a storage container, and to seal the building. They've gone back several times to seal it in different ways. Because it's now a empty building, our regular insurer dropped coverage for that, that facility. They do continue to cover it for liability, but not the building itself. So, I did go to the outside and, and picked up some insurance for, from Lloyds of London. It's not horribly expensive. It's about twenty-six hundred dollars a year. The liability will continue through Maya. The requirements of that insurance, though, and anybody else that's going to insure that building, is that we maintain it. And there currently is no budget to maintain. The current requirements, the insurance company looked at it. The gutters are falling out. They're full. They got stuff in them, so we need to maybe replace some of the gutters and clean them, and fix the downspouts, et cetera, in order to keep that building sound. They expect the building to be sound. If we don't do that work, they're going to drop that insurance. We still have liability insurance, but it means if, God forbid, the thing burns to the ground, we get nothing for it. So, that's a future thing to talk about, but it's clearly a risk for the town and a monetary risk. There is no budget currently to maintain that building, so you know the heat, water, and electricity are turned off, so that, that building is, is, is completely bare. There is, most of the first floor has been boarded up. There are some additional windows that probably should be, but they're packed up against bushes. So, if we cut the bushes down and then board those windows up, you're going to have one ugly eyesore in the middle of town. So, the inside has become molded, and it's very moldy. It smells in there, and it's not inhabitable at the moment. Outside, there is a fire escape that is accessible to anybody. We have had people go up that fire escape and access the top door and windows, so we have boarded those up. But that is to be a, a safety risk in an unoccupied building. There are no alarms in that building. We do have some cameras that are covering the outside, but safety is an issue. So, the building has been vandalized. I have two police reports that I will pass out to you. Matt has indicated there were two other times where they didn't get the police involved. They just, they didn't believe that people were, actually got it, went into the building, but they broke windows and et cetera, and attempted to get in, or, or opened the door and then didn't go in. So, Matt believes there's been four incidences of people attempting or getting into the, into the building. They go into the building. They've been spray painting things inside, and it's not safe inside that building. So, it's, it's clearly an issue.
Diapers?
What's it? Is there a typo on, oh, diapers.
There were diapers strewn about.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see that on there. Could be. I mean, you got an empty building. Who knows what goes in, in these things? And I'm sure you understand why insurance companies aren't interested in insuring these things. They're clearly a public nuisance. So, my personal opinion is that in the current condition, the, the fire escape needs to come down. That is an expense, because we need to get equipment in to tear it down. We're going to make sure it doesn't damage, further damage the building, but it is something that's there that people can climb, and it, my personal opinion is it should be taken down. What I wanted to say here today is that the town really needs to decide what to do with this building, because my opinion that doing nothing is not an option. And, and we do have options. We could, you know, maintain the building and pay the money to maintain it as is, secure better the outside, and hope that people aren't going to get in it. We'll need some budgets to do that. We could tear it down. There is asbestos in that building. There is mold in that building, and there is probably lead paint on the, on the inside and, and most likely on the outside. That has to be remediated during a, a time when we tear it down. So, that ups the cost. Matt believes we're probably talking fifty or sixty thousand dollars to tear the building down and remediate the, the issues. The other issue with that is, and Rich is looking into it further, but there is a, some type of underground stream that runs under that property, which gives us, if we tear it down, it gives us two years to rebuild, or anybody two years to rebuild in that footprint. After that, they're saying that we cannot rebuild. So, I think that was discussed at town meeting. So, if we take it down, you know, what do we do with it? Rich actually had a suggestion today, which I, which I thought was a good idea, is, I mean, we're going to end up going back to town meeting on this. We could put out an RFP to developers and say, is anybody, would be, anybody be interested in developing this property? And then we go back, if somebody has a plan that we like, we go back to town meeting with that plan and say, you know, here is an option. They're going to do this. This is what the building's going to look like, what the cost is, what the tax revenue is, et cetera. So, that's, that, that's an option. We could do a long-term lease on the property and try to get a developer to do it. I personally don't know what long-term is, whether that's twenty-five years or fifty years, but at least we would get some tax revenue out of the, out of the facility. We could attempt to rehab the building. While we would need to get consulting help to know for sure, it's, it's, it may not be financially viable option. There, the building would need to be brought up to current specifications. ADA, if it's left as a two-story building, for instance, we got to put an elevator in. All of the dangerous things, asbestos and stuff, it'd have to be remediated before. The back stairwell, I understand, is not in good shape and would need to be fixed. Windows, I mean, everything that we would need, the heating system, you would need to rehab the whole building. So, somebody'd need to tell us that that, that's a viable thing. But, you know, with money, anything's possible. So, you know, that is something.
Well, interesting with the stretch code, there's some additional requirements perhaps, too.
Absolutely. We would have to do it up to the stretch code. Stretch code. We could tear it down and replace it with another building. We could, you know, people have talked about, maybe you put a community center in there with meeting rooms that people could use. Could replace it in kind with a two-story building, much more expensive, because you, again, you got to put elevators in, you got to make it ADA compliant, and all those things. You could put a one-story building in there, Jim mentioned, and, and while it is much less space, goes on the footprint of what's there, it would be substantially less expensive. But for municipalities to build buildings with prevailing wage, et cetera, as you have learned, as you see with the police station and, and the work coming up in the other buildings, it's expensive. But those, those are all options. We could tear it down and make it the parking lot bigger. We could tear it down and, and put up...
We got, we got, we got to do something. I think that's the...
Yeah, we got to park in there. So, we, so what I'm asking is, is the board to consider taking some action to, to move forward on an action plan for this building, and, and help us put, put together a plan, because I, I just don't think the current inaction is, is viable.
Well, we've wrestled with this for five years. On three different occasions, we've brought recommendations forward. Three different occasions, they've been turned down. Chairman of the ZBA is here, who spoke at town meeting about this very topic. Chris, you have any input you want to share?
I do.
Grab a mic. I had a feeling you were here for a reason.
Christopher Weider, sixty-four, Cleveland. I think there's a, one at town meeting, I think the public spoke very clearly, that we don't, we weren't ready to demolish this building yet or sell it. At that time, I did mention that the building should be maintained. At that time, I did mention that the building should be maintained. The bittersweet has taken over three-quarters of the front of it, the u's haven't been trimmed since town meeting. One of the ways to prevent a liability is to remove it. We should have been maintaining this building last November. It should have been maintained throughout the entire spring. The grass gets cut, but that's it. There's still a number of play items in the back from when there was a daycare center there that have not been removed. Water, mosquitoes, possums, woodchucks. It becomes a breeding ground, just like in the front, by leaving the u's and leaving the bittersweet growing, you allow animals to start to find haven there. So I think we've missed what the taxpayers stated in November, which was, we should be maintaining this building, plain and simple. Whether it's boarded up, whether it has heat, we should be maintaining it, and we didn't. I'm not gonna talk to a lot of the building code issues, but if we just rehab, I don't think we have to put an elevator in. I think if we take the existing structure, we can do a lot to it without having to meet some of these extended laws. Clearly, I would hate to use the word lead paint, because since there was a daycare in there, I hope nobody's listening who had children in there, because if there was lead paint in there, why do we ever have a daycare center in there? So I don't wanna use scare tactics. I think if the selectmen wanna come back to the town meeting in November and present proposals to the public as to what they think should be done with that building, or develop a study committee to get some ideas, what we can do with that building, or if we decide to tear it down, what we can put there. I just think it would be a mistake to lose that asset. Whether or not it has insurance, I don't know if it's liability insurance, is it a property insurance?
I have both on it now. It is the property insurance that's most at risk.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and I don't think it would take, I think it would take the DPW four hours to clean up the outside, and I don't think it would be very difficult to secure the gutters, secure the doors. Certainly, I would actually believe that we should put some passive venting in there, so we don't develop mold and mildew in there. Screens, storm windows would certainly help facilitate that. So I think the public spoke, and I think it's important that we, we still maintain that asset as the public asked to, and we just do some minimal work to make it so it's acceptable, so it can look presentable. Again, it could look presentable if we cleaned it up. We've done, you know, by putting big red X's on the doors, we're certainly not promoting holding that building. So I think there's some work to be done, and I think we've sort of missed what the taxpayers were saying in November, which was, maintain the building, let's go forward and look what we can do with that building in the future. And I think we have to do that, and I think that's really the course we should take.
Appreciate it, Chris.
Chairman, may I make a comment? You know, at that town meeting, the way I interpreted the feedback, and there was some voting, obviously, as well, was that the town didn't necessarily wanna see it be something other than property owned by the town, operated by the town. They didn't necessarily like the idea, at least the folks that were there that evening, of it being sold to a private entity who would develop the project, you know, with the proceeds coming to the town to use in other places, perhaps within the town. And that's what I got from it, not necessarily that town hall itself, as it exists today, needed to be preserved, but that that property was looked upon as perhaps the only remaining piece of property here in the center of town that's still, you know, within our purview in terms of, you know, a decision by this board and by the residents of the town. That is, is, am I correct, or did I misinterpret what the residents?
They were.
Some of the, some of the.
Go ahead.
Some of the pushback was that, you know, people, people asked, came up to the microphone and said, if you wanna sell it, come to us with a deal and then let town meeting approve the deal. Clearly, there was, I'm not saying that everybody said that, but that was some of the pushback at town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, there were a number of things discussed that night, to Chris's credit, what Chris said tonight, he said that night at town meeting. So you're consistent in your views, and the trimming was said then and it's said now, so we have no dispute. The vote clearly was that they didn't wanna sell it, but the discussions were broad over a number of things, so. Kevin, you have any, I mean, you have any thoughts on it? Then I'll give you my two cents.
I've experienced the last town meeting and the last discussion surrounding what to do with the building, but prior to that, would you mind briefly just going over what the previous two proposals entailed?
Well, we originally were going to bring forward, the first recommendation was to sell it. We withdrew that warrant article, because I agree with Chris and I agree with the vote, that it is the only piece of land that the town currently owns in the V1 district. It's the last piece of land we own, and I think it would be unfortunate to lose it. At that time, we also didn't realize that we had this paper pond or paper river that goes through there, and I'm not using the right term, Chris, you may know it, but there is a river, if you will, or I think it's a stream, actually, that is protected under the conservation laws, that while it may not actually be there, it's there on a map, and therefore we have to live with it, that restricted our ability, because we own the lot next to the old town hall as well. So when we originally envisioned this, we saw a larger piece of property that we could develop and do something a little bit more with. We learned that that's not viable, that we, that lot next door really is of no value in terms of building because of this stream, and so we're really restricted to the footprint that's there. So that kinda killed the second plan, if you will. All of it requires money, all of it requires, whatever we do, it's gonna require funding. I don't think it's as simple as cutting back the bushes and boarding up the doors, but whatever needs to be done to secure it can be done. But it'll still be vulnerable, we've learned that at Southwood, where the Archdiocese has time after time secured the old hospital, and it gets broken into continually time after time after time, and Mr. Bullock has had a nightmare with that. We don't want that same nightmare down here, but we can do more than we have, no question. The longer-term issue is what we do with it. And I think the consensus of town meeting, at least that meeting, is that they wanna retain the property. I agree with that, that's just my opinion, others can voice a different view. We're gonna have to come up with a solution to this. I believe, Chris, that his statement is right, that if it's torn down, we have two years to build on that footprint, otherwise we lose all building rights to that spot. So we can't do one without a plan for the other. And that other includes funding. So I think your recommendation is right on, now whether we can get it through town meeting and people agree, or, well, that's their vote, that's what democracy is all about, so. But I do think something has to get done. We cannot continue to have it sit there, the eyesore that it is and the hazard that it is. I think you agree?
I agree, I think that's, that's my point. We have to make a decision, but until we make that decision as a town, let's do the minimum we have to do to meet the insurance laws, to make it look presentable.
And we can do that. I don't know whether four hours is the right number of hours, but clearly we can do more than we have.
I can do it in four hours. Give me the DPW and I'll get it done in four hours.
We both got pickup trucks, I'll come down and give you a hand. No, point well taken.
Yeah, I mean, we can probably clean it up, and get some gutters on it, I mean, there's enough contracts in town if we have to do some.
Would you like to? I'm gonna put you on the spot, would you like to contribute to thinking through an alternative plan for this?
Absolutely.
I don't agree with you in terms of circumventing the rules associated with handicap accessibility and things of that nature.
I'm not saying circumvent, I'm just saying I don't think if we use the existing footprint, we don't change the structure, I do not think we have to install an elevator for the second floor.
We've been told otherwise, but you.
But I don't, again, it's all building code, we have to look at the building code.
Not my area of expertise.
I just don't wanna scare people with lead paint, costs for elevators that may not be necessary.
We know there's asbestos, we don't know this.
We know there's asbestos, of course, it's an old heating system. But structurally, it's got very good bones, so that's why I say, instead of just tearing it down, let's look at those bones before we decide to put them out to pasture. You have good bones, and you know, we wanna keep you around for a little bit, right?
You're gracious, thank you. Right? We'll go away from that one. Wanna contribute?
Yes, absolutely.
Can you put your thoughts together and let us know what you think?
I will.
I mean, we've got the cleanup part, I'm talking about the next step.
I will, I will, and maybe we can put something together for September, October, selectmen's meeting, and then.
That'd be great.
Maybe put something together for town meeting in the fall.
That would be very helpful, Chris.
Okay.
Okay with you guys?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
And by the way, I mean, others than, you know, if anyone else has thoughts on what we might or might not do to that facility, share them.
I do wanna say one thing about the lead paint, that's an assumption based on the age of the building, particularly on the outside, there's been no testing, so I don't know that there's lead paint on the, and it would be on the outside, most likely, not on the inside, but there has been no testing to know that.
Well, I believe that the part where the daycare was, was a newer component of the building anyway, wasn't the original building, if I'm right. Am I right on that? I think. I'm not either, but I thought that piece was, does anyone remember? Marion? Where's Marion when we need her?
Well, recreation was in the front, on the inside.
Yeah, where recreation was.
But all the toys and stuff are on the back.
Yeah, but, well, anyway. All right, Chris, thank you.
So as part of these recommendations, at some point, we're gonna need some money for some engineering or something to look at that building to make these determinations. I mean, I'm sure Bob can help us with one of the codes, but we are gonna need, you know, funding to.
Let's, let's make it a goal to bring something forward to the fall town meeting, whatever that might be. Hopefully, I mean, it may be that we're not in a position to do that, but let's make a good effort to do that. In the meantime, let's explore what we can do to make it far more presentable and safe than it is.
Yeah, the challenge is all, the fall town meeting, the challenge is always that warrant articles are due shortly after Labor Day, so, giddy up.
Gotcha.
Thank you for listening, I appreciate that.
Chris, thank you for your input. All right, Jack? Anybody?
Well, now Scott's done with his five minutes. So the fall town, no, sorry, at the May town meeting, we, the town meeting approved creation of the town government study committee.
Charter committee.
Town government study committee.
Is that what it's called now?
Yeah.
Okay.
'Cause the town government study committee was broader than charter, so that's, one of the purposes was to create a charter or any other business that the town government study committee created. So we need to take on that, that action that town meeting approved and create that committee. And so I put names on the agenda of people who have volunteered to be a part of that. That may be jumping the gun a little bit as to, you know, depending on if you wanna, how you wanna proceed in creating kind of a charter for that committee, whether you wanna do that yourselves, or do you wanna have the committee have their first action be to create a charter that would then get approved by the Board of Selectmen? So I guess I'm asking, how do you wanna proceed with moving forward with that town government study committee? And the people that had volunteered were Rob Garrity and Jonathan Smith, two former selectmen, Anthony is obviously our assistant town clerk, and then I think somebody put my name on there for some reason. I'd be happy to serve as an ex-ophisio member of that committee.
And we need more people than just three, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The committee should be broader than that.
Sure.
So if any of you have thoughts for people that would like to participate in that. The charter committee, if I remember, back in the nineties, brought forward recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, who in turn brought the recommendations forward to town meeting. I believe that's the process that took place.
I think that's the process that Rentham went through recently, so.
It is, yeah. So I would assume that that would be a good way to start. Would you be agreeable with that?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
The charter committee would bring recommend, the town government committee would look at our organizational structure. Going back into the nineties, one of the recommendations they made was specifically around the finance department, creating a finance department, which was, in fact, Jack was our first finance director, ran out of that recommendation. One of the other recommendations was go to five selectmen, that was not a recommendation that was followed.
Thankfully. Thankfully.
But anyway, they would look at the way we do, the way our government runs, and potentially make recommendations on organizational changes that they view would be more efficient in terms of, I guess no other way to say it, create more efficiencies or whatever. I don't know what they might or might not recommend, they may recommend no changes. They may recommend a town manager versus a town administrator, there are a number of different approaches they could take to that. They would bring those recommendations back to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen would discuss them, and then vote what to bring forward to town meeting, 'cause town meeting would have to approve those changes. That's the process that was done in the nineties. We can change that.
You can change it to some degree, I mean, if you're.
That study, by the way, took a couple of years.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is not a short-term process.
Rentham had a two-year, two-to-three-year process.
Yeah.
Agree. But, and I think, I don't think you can really, you can't really change that process much more than, you know, because I think if you are gonna make changes that impact how we run.
Has to go to town meeting.
Either it has to go through home rule petition, or it has to go through, has to go through town meeting, and then it has to go through town, home rule petition.
Right.
Or it has to create a charter through home rule petition.
Correct.
So either way, it's gonna, it's absolutely gonna go through.
It's gonna go through the Board of Selectmen and the town meeting.
To town meeting, to the State House.
That's the only way you can.
Yeah.
What were these recommendations based on? Was there a consultant involved in the conversations, or was it based on sole experience within town government?
There were, I think, eight or nine people on that committee. I know Ramesh was on it, I know Helen Cleary was on, I'm trying to remember, but it was a good group of people. There was no consultant. They visited other towns, they looked at other best practices in other communities. I don't think Rentham used a consultant.
I don't, not that I'm aware of.
Believe they did. We just tried to get some talented people that can examine how we do business. Now, in the finance area, we did not have a finance department. I mean, that, to me, was a glaring void in our organizational structure, and I think was a low-hanging fruit to fix. I don't know what else they may or may not choose to see. You know, there are different ways you can reorganize departments, you can have different reporting relationships, I mean, there are a number of different things you can do organizationally if they wanna take a look at it.
Yeah, I think.
But I would hope they would look at other towns and best practice.
Yeah, and the Mass Municipal Managers Association.
They have a lot of work on it.
Has a group that will, basically, either people have been doing this for thirty years or even some retired managers, who will come and.
I guess they would, I would say yes, they did have consultants, but not hired consultants. There were resources through the MMA that I know they used. So indirectly, I would say, yeah, they did use consultants, they used resources.
But you can, you know, if you look at some town charters, they're sixty pages long. I mean, so you can really, you.
You can go crazy.
You can go crazy, and I mean, then, you know, the good news is, it also creates a process for making changes after that, so you don't have to go back to the legislature, you know?
Thank you very much.
It might say, we need a seven-eighths vote of town meeting, but it's, but it creates a process where the town can now control its own destiny. If we wanted to change the number of, you know, if we wanted to change the Recreation Commission from being elected, make it appointed, we've gotta go to the legislature right now. This, that would be, you know, we could, this process can look at all the boards, how they're elected, what authority they have, what do they do, how do they process bills, who can hire, who can fire, who can, who writes up reviews, you know, you can, that this committee, and then the selectmen, and then town meeting, all have that ability to make those changes.
One town, for example, on their planning board, changed it from five elected members to two appointed and three elected. And there was a good reason for that, you know, that they, you know, you do want, you know, you're on it. Jeff, you were on it for two terms, you need a certain level of experience and talent, not always, but you got, if you have a board of five people that doesn't have any of that, you can be very vulnerable to a developer. So the thought was having two people with, again, like a finance director, in the old days, finance directors were elected. So you could have someone in that position theoretically that had no financial background whatsoever. And we've sort of evolved from a full volunteer kind of organizational structure to a very professional organization. We're running a forty million dollar budget, you can't do that on a whim of winning an election, you need to be sure that you have certain criteria and credentials available for the folks that hold those jobs. So that's one way to look at it. I mean, we still are very much a volunteer board organization, and it may stay that way, there's nothing wrong with it, it's just different views on that, but that's the kinda stuff they look at.
Gotcha.
So do we need to vote to establish that? I thought, did we do that or not?
Well, as we, you know, as we talked about at town meeting, the selectmen have the authority to form a committee whenever they want, so you, but the short answer is no, we already, the town meeting already did that, they created the committee.
That's right.
But they, the motion was to have you, you fill that committee.
Yeah, membership.
Well, I know Rob came up to me that night and wanted to participate in that. Jonathan's a former selectman, Anthony being a assistant town clerk would be good. I think it's probably better to have you a non-voting member of that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because your position may be one that is discussed as part of that process, so I'm comfortable with starting off with those three, but we need more people. So anyone at home that's interested in participating in that, let us know, please. We need more folks. folks.
Now that we've outlined the scope, the vision for the committee, now that that's out there, I think we would have to define also how many people we're envisioning as filling the committee as a whole, right? And I think that I would be in favor of, if you would find it agreeable, that we hold off on appointing anybody until we appoint the full board. If we have a range of people before our next meeting that express interest based on what we've outlined today, I think by that standard, we'd be able to fill the board in a way that we'd have a range of experiences, or however, we'd have a full scope of people to choose from to put into the board. I think that would...
We can do that. Yep. Jeff, your thoughts?
No, that, that's fine. You know, like, like we were saying, this is a two-year process, so we'll take a little bit more time upfront and do this in a thoughtful way. Probably makes sense.
That's fine with me, yeah.
Not to say that the people that sit here aren't, I think their experience is gonna be invaluable.
I just kinda put them on there because...
They've expressed interest.
Yes, absolutely.
So, let's, let's keep them in the interest file and see if we can draw them up, five or six more.
Yep.
Right.
Okay. That's a good recommendation.
Yeah, well said. It's, it's unlikely that these folks wouldn't find themselves on that committee.
Well, they're not gonna be able to do much till it fills anyways, so...
Right, yeah, right.
Okay. So, we'll, we'll table this, and folks at home, if you have interest in participating in this, please, Chris, step forward.
Already on the old collarbone.
He should've left, he should've quit while he was ahead. Go on home.
Actually, the committee here on, you're, you got a full plate. And by the way, thank you for that.
You had a request from the Friends of the North Hall Public Library, annual book and bake sale to be held on Saturday, April twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, so we do have that.
Absolutely. Do I have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
An annual event. Is it the DPW?
Yes.
DPW branch, as usual? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
You still do, from Mr. Plumbau.
Oh, I do. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll speak to the last item, because I had a conversation with the Chairman of the ZBA, and he's basically looking for a vote of confidence and support from the Board of Selectmen that, and it is not specific to any case, any action, any specific direction, but there's, we all know they're involved in multiple issues on the ZBA. They're having a full agenda these days. And we have authorized additional spending in terms of legal resources, Dan Hill being one example of that. And should they need more resources, he's wondering whether or not we would be supportive of that. Speaking for myself, I am fully supportive of that, but he wanted that vote from, I'm recommending that with the Board, vote that support for the ZBA, so that should they be in a position where they need to seek legal advice, they will at least have some level of comfort that will provide that funding. It's an unknown number. It's an unknown issue, and no request may ever be made, but it is a vote of support to do that. Did I say it adequately, Chris?
Put us in any...
It is not, and I wanna stress this, it is not any action item that is on the table at this point in time. So, that is what's before us. Now, there, I just, a comment, if I may, we, we all know that, that any such request may or may not involve a sum that would require us to go to Town Meeting for further approval. You know, we have a certain legal fund that we can spend. We have the Advisory Board Emergency Fund that is available to us, which is seventy-five thousand dollars. But aside from that, we would have to go to Town Meeting to get any additional funding, should it exceed, and I'm using the full amount available in those two areas, which is probably unlikely. And Chris understands that. That's why we can't put a number on it. But it is our willingness to support their actions, should they need to take those actions, that he's looking for. So, really, it's just a vote of support that we would certainly more than consider their request for future legal support, should they need it in any of the issues that they're currently dealing with.
Yeah, just, just a comment.
Yeah.
I, I think everyone in town, pretty much everyone in town, I think, is aware of all the activity that this Board has had to contend with. And it, it's really thankless work, quite frankly. I mean, these folks, you know, have, have worked very hard on a number of projects, the Forty B projects in particular, as well as other business, town business. So, you know, absolutely wanna deliver the right message in moving forward with this motion. I think the underlying message may also be that the funds that are being spent for legal services are being well-spent, and I, I trust that they are. It may be worth, Chris, if you're willing to just provide any comment as far as, you know, your satisfaction in terms of the legal support and the decisions that are being made by the Board in pursuing legal support, I'm sure it's all valid, but maybe it's a good opportunity for you just to reassure the community, 'cause I'm sure there's significant funds being spent.
That's a tough question, Chris.
It is. Well, Tom, almost easier.
Yeah.
I think, as you know, Dan Hill has been representing the ZBA as our counsel for Forty Bs, and has done a fantastic job. We had a couple of individuals prior to him, and I think Dan has been extremely helpful. His insight, he does a lot of work in Wellesley, a lot of work in, in Wayland. He's doing a couple of projects in Bellingham, and he brings all that to the table. And he's been of great guidance. He's recommended some peer reviewers for engineering studies, for architectural review, that have also been very well-appreciated and have brought a lot to the table. So, we're very pleased with that. We've also had the opportunity to work with Dave DeLuca, more than probably the zoning board ever has, and he also has provided the Board with a lot of assistance with some difficult decisions we've had to make. So, I think today, we have been very fortunate, especially to have Dan. I know we wanna use him in the future for a great deal of these Forty Bs, and some of the litigation that may arise out of them. And again, I think, I think we've had a, a good run, and we've been very fortunate. We've had Patrick Gardner also help us with some ConCom issues, and again, absolutely outstanding. Matter of fact, DEP just agreed with him with regard to a project in town about some isolated wetlands. So, we've been very fortunate. I think they've, they've done a great job so far for us, hopefully in the future.
And the majority of those resources were funded by this Board. So, that, in essence, is really what Chris was looking for, is a continuance of that type of support.
And speaking, speaking for myself, the Board has my full support and confidence.
I would echo that. Kevin?
The general nature of the point is what concerns me more than anything else. I understand that we're not necessarily approving a definitive amount or an unlimited bankroll for anything that we might encounter in the future. I initially was under the impression that it was centered around Forty B support, and it sounds like that's much broader. It sounds like it goes past Forty B support, and it addresses any concern that may become before the ZBA. Is that correct?
No, this was specifically Forty B.
Got it. Okay, well, that clears that up. Thank you.
It's just not any specific project or action that he's currently, that has currently taken place.
Understood.
But it is for Forty B. Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. And thank you to the ZBA members, other members.
Fair question. Thanks, Chris. So, what is the Board's pleasure?
If there's anything, you could vote a consensus, a yes, you support the concept, I guess is, but you're not, you're not taking any vote on a specific dollar amount.
Well, there isn't a dollar amount to vote, but I, I would request a, a motion to voice support for future funding, should the ZBA need it for Forty B projects.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chris.
Jim, I think you had liaison reports on there, if you...
Uh, I don't know that we have any. Has anyone got any?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Nothing formal. I've been doing my meeting read circuit.
Okay.
That's about it.
Kevin has not gotten thrown out of any department head's offices yet, so that's, that's been a plus.
The year is young.
We have goals.
Goals, yes. I have Kevin's. I have done mine. Have you done yours?
Hmm, I have some ideas.
Okay. Can we finish them by the fourteenth?
Yeah. I'm, I'm gonna meet with Jack between now and then.
All right, so we'll finish those on the fourteenth. Lawrence Street Bridge is on there, but not for any, is that, are your folks here for any particular item? Lawrence Street Bridge?
Morning, morning.
Okay. It's really not a discussion item for us tonight. It's on the agenda for the fourteenth. If you have any specific questions that we can answer briefly, we'll be glad to.
Then why was it on the agenda to receive bids?
Only just, just as a review of the fact that we are receiving bids on Thursday, which will be open at ten o'clock in the morning. We have no idea what those bids may, may not tell us, and so, we've done that to find out the financial viability of this project as to what, because there are limited resources, and we don't know what we can or we cannot do. Once we have that information, we will have a formal hearing process on the fourteenth, where we'll, we'll discuss the issues that were delayed in the March meeting, which is public safety concerns, over what Mayor may not, closures, non-closures, one-way traffic, whatever it may entail, we will have that discussion with the Chiefs.
Contamination?
Contamination is not on the table for us to discuss.
You said it was, the bridge was canceled until you had answers on the contamination.
The, the project at Abbeville is unrelated to the bridge project.
No, I said, oh, no, you said that the area around it will not be disturbed, or discussed.
And it has not been.
Twenty-third. You said that nothing would be done until you had answers on that contamination issue.
I, I too have, I too have reviewed the meeting, so I know what was said, but I, but the issues, the issues that we were dealing with at that time were unknown to us. We, we got a report, as you know, and it had some alarming concerns. There's been a process put in place, and LSP has been hired under the ZBA, not under this Board, and that process is now in place. We do not, there have, there was a letter sent today by Rich McCarthy to one of your members, a very detailed letter, answering, it's, I think, three, four pages long, talking about all the issues associated with those questions, that are answered very clearly in that email. I'm sure it'll get around. But it is unrelated, we're very confident that there are no issues associated with the bridge, as far as what is going on at the Abbeville site. We're very confident of that. And in terms of the bridge, we've been trying to get money for that bridge for years, years.
It's been here thirty years.
You know, you know. I mean, the bridge goes back to, I think, nineteen oh seven, and it is falling apart. The roadway is falling apart, and we gotta fix it. We have to fix it. That isn't an option for us. What happens with that project or other projects is irrelevant to the fact that we have a safety concern over that bridge. So, we're gonna pursue that. We have to pursue that.
Well, they said that they feel that there's arsenic in the soil that's naturally contained, that's naturally occurring. I apologize.
Do you have the microphone?
Yeah, you need to grab the mic. It's okay.
Yeah, we're getting the call there from, from the back.
Margaret Cahaly, Cranberry Meadow Road, and, yeah, no, the report showed that there's arsenic in the soil, and they feel that because of where it was found, it's naturally occurring in a very unhealthy amount. And, like I said, and now you wanna tear up the road and, without any knowledge of this, is my biggest concern at this point. And I thought we'd have some answers before this bridge project moved forward.
Well, I think you're associating a report that didn't take place on that area. It took place on the AOL, up in that area.
Yeah, but it took place near the pond.
Totally separate.
We are also near the pond. That's, you know...
It's, they're, they're unrelated, as far as we understand. That's what we understand. They're, they're unrelated. And we have to fix that road and that bridge.
Yeah, well, they already did the footings without ever going to the bridge.
Well, they did, they did temporary footings. They did, you know, that's not a permanent fix. That, that was done to make sure it didn't collapse. You know, it was in dire shape. And Mr. McGee, the DPW, did that work. That bridge needs to be done. And if there is an issue and you need town water, that's the only way to get it to you. There's no alternative.
I know, but I'm not yelling for town water right now. Nobody is on our side. We're just, you know, concerned, concerned about our safety in this project. You said straight out that we won't rush, and now it appears to me that you're rushing. That's, you know, the bids have gone out.
We're gonna have to agree to disagree.
Yeah. You said, you know, safety is an issue on all standards, and now, doesn't seem to be the case.
Well, we'll have this debate on the fourteenth. We're not gonna approve any bids tomorrow.
Thank you.
So, we're just gonna know what the financials are tomorrow. That's all we're gonna know. And once the bids are in, just because we have bids doesn't mean they're accepted or the project's going forward. It gives us a parameter under which we have a better understanding of what may or may not be feasible in terms of repairing the bridge and the causeway within the financial resources that we currently have available, 'cause we have a specific amount of funds available. It's not an endless resource. And so, we really don't know what we can or we can't do. And that's the reason, while the storms were really the primary reason why we delayed the meeting with the Chiefs, it actually, I think, turned out to be a good thing, because we'd be talking about something we don't know for sure. We, until we know what the proposed construction may or may not be, then we can have a conversation that's meaningful about what might or might not take place. And that's one of the reasons we went forward. So...
I asked you specifically if the bridge was on hold. My name is Margaret Bedard from twenty-eighth Lawrence Street, and you did say, yes, it was on hold. As a matter of fact...
Yes, I did.
Jack Hathaway clarified which project I was talking about.
You're, you're correct, but we've also learned that we had to go forward to find out more information. I've said that several times. We can agree to disagree. We have not accepted a bid. We haven't even opened the bids. And when we open them, we may find they're not viable, or they are viable. And we may or may not vote to accept them.
That's fine, but you just told Margaret you said something different, and that's all I'm trying to clarify. You said to Margaret that you didn't tell us. You said that the Abbeville project was something separate. We weren't talking about the Abbeville project.
Jim, can I try?
Go ahead.
So, I think there was some, there was definitely a lot, two months ago, there was a lot of concern, because a report had come out, and both the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen had some concerns. What, what is alleviating those concerns to some degree is the fact that we made the decision to hire an LSP at the Town's expense, which is gonna oversee and review the LSP's work that the Abbeville project, their LSP. So, I, I believe that the Board of Selectmen now, and the ZBA, and the ConCom are, have some level of confidence that the LSP that we have independently hired is gonna make sure that whatever remediation needs to be done at Abbeville gets done. And that was, that was, without that LSP in place, they, that was the reason for the concern two months ago.
Have we checked the contamination in the soil by the bridge? Because I can always buy water, I can buy a pool and springs, but I can't tent my house for as long as the bridge builds.
You're before the wrong board to answer that. I don't know. I do not know the answer to that. But Jack is correct. All of us were, we, we came to a screeching hall because of the report that you all have seen. And, and I think we saw it two days before the meeting, if I recall, or a very, very tight frame before our meeting. So, you're correct. We said, well, we gotta come to a stop here. We've gotta figure out what's going on. That was the right decision to make at that point in time. And Jack is right. There have been a number of months that have passed now, and we have a better understanding of what may or may not be the issue. And we have our own expert now involved in the process to provide us with that information, to verify what's already been provided. And I suspect he would do more testing. I, I don't know. That's before the ZBA.
They will. Absolutely. That's part of the process.
But I'm sure he will do more testing. If there's something that we discover, it is a result of that testing, that tells us we have to do something different, we're gonna do it. We're not gonna do anything that puts anyone at risk. No, no one's gonna do that. And if you're suggesting that, that's not true. We, we still have a bridge project and a causeway that we need to bring forward. We need more information to better understand what we can and we cannot do with that bridge. And that's the reason we had to get more data. We, we, we're dealing in the dark until we have that information. And so, we haven't, we haven't awarded any bids, and we're not gonna award any bids tomorrow. That requires a vote of this Board, and it'll be on the agenda for August fourteenth. We don't know if it's financially viable or not viable. We don't know what it entails or doesn't entail. We don't know what public safety issues to deal with, how much closure, how much time. We don't have those answers. Once we get the bids in, we'll have some more, we'll have specific information where we can have a more informative conversation that's more specific to what may actually occur. Prior to that, we're, we're talking hypotheticals. And there's been so much misinformation about this whole process that we just don't wanna do that again. We, we don't wanna have a discussion about, well, we're gonna close it for sixty days, and then find out it's gonna be closed for ninety days. We, we don't wanna have that discussion. So, we need to have that information. That's all we're trying to do, is to get the information. No one's put a spade into the ground at that bridge. Nothing has been done.
Actually, there has been work prior. There actually has been some work done by Tom to pass it out.
Well, if it's been, if there's work, it's been done for testing, okay?
Correct, but I'm just saying, there has been a spade in the ground.
But it's been done for testing. There's been work done on a lot of that site for testing. There has been no work done in terms of trying to repair or fix that bridge or road. We have not attempted to, unless we fill the pothole or something like that, but there has been no work done there. Testing, yes. And if there's more testing required, then we'll do more testing. Whatever's required, we'll do. And that's what the LSP will tell us. This, we're not experts in that area, but our, our job is, is public safety and roads. That's our job. That's the only involvement we have in this project. And we have a bridge and a road that's unsafe, and we need to fix it. And we need to fix it the correct way. And we need to have good information to do. And we need to have good information to do that.
That would be great, and it'd be wonderful if you could include our neighborhood, which we have asked for-
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
I said, that would be great, and we would love to be included in this process, which we've asked for in the past. There are meetings that take place in regards to, I'm not sure what project, where each representative of one board shows up, and the developer, which apparently is untied to this project, we would like to be informed. We don't want to find out that the bid went forward without having some communication with us prior. That's all we're looking for. We're looking for open communication.
There have been no meetings where decisions have been made by minority members of these boards, none. Boards do, individuals from various boards get together all the time, every week, all the time, to talk about issues so that they can bring back to their boards to have meaningful discussions about what can or cannot take place. Those are perfectly legal meetings, they are not violations of the open meeting law, they happen all the time on all topics. We have meetings with the finance department, talking about budgets and things of that nature. We have meetings with the Conservation Board. I meet with the chairman of the Conservation Board to know what's going on with his department, so if there are areas we can help, or areas I need to bring back to this board. That's the only way we can get anything done here. It's not backhanded meetings, it's not secret meetings, they're not making any deals. None of these meetings have any empowerment to make any decisions whatsoever, none. They're non-quorum meetings of individuals trying to get things done. We're all volunteers trying to get stuff done. We can't get it done in a two-hour meeting on a Tuesday night. We can't. So we hold these individual gatherings, people show up, whoever can, never a quorum of any board. No decisions are made, it's a discussion. Then those meetings, any decision that is made is made in a public forum and a board by a vote. There is no, don't make this what it's not.
I didn't say that. You're putting words in my mouth. I never said that. I said, we'd like to be invited, so that we know what's going on. That's all I said.
But what I'm trying to say to you is, these meetings are not public meetings. They're gatherings of individual meeting, members of various boards that have discussions to try and understand what they can bring forward to their boards that become part of the public meeting. That's the process. And there's nothing wrong with that process. No one's making decisions. I do hear you suggesting that you want to be part of those individual meetings. It's not viable, it's not feasible. Sometimes they happen on the spur of a moment. They're not posted, because they're not quorum meetings. It's, I meet with Jack on finances probably three or four times a week with the finance director. That's my area of fun. And we meet several times a week to talk about different things going on with the finance committee. We don't make any decisions. We don't make, there's no votes. And then if there's something I need back, to bring back to this board, I bring it back to this board, and then this board discusses it in a public forum and makes that vote. This goes on all the time. All the time. That's the only way you can get anything done. And you can't have it a public forum every time you do that. You can't do it.
I didn't ask for that. That's not what I asked for. But it's fine. You've made yourself clear, it's okay.
Hi, Ann Middleton, six Brett's Farm Road. I'm thinking about pulling back my question, because I was going to ask about the contamination at the pond, but this is not the right time for it.
And honestly, it's not the right board.
Right, so then I respectfully decline. I'll save it for another time.
I know the Board of Health is deeply involved in this. Actually, that's their area. It's really the Board of Health. It's really not Conservation, it's the Board of Health. And I believe the LSP is reporting to the ZBA.
Correct.
But the Board of Health is involved. I know, I know Tom Gilbert is very much involved in it. And believe me, if, you know, Tom's been on these boards for thirty-five years. He's really good, very thorough, understands the issues. This is his neighborhood. Not that he lives in that neighborhood.
No, I know, I know.
But, you know, he has a high level of expertise.
Okay.
And I have every confidence that if there's something we need to know, we'll know.
Okay.
And it'll be in a public forum.
Great.
No one is hiding anything.
Thank you.
No one's making deals or anything. We're just trying to get this done.
Yes, I know no one's making deals, but I've lived in the town twenty-five years, and this has already been dealt with years ago. The EPA was supposed to clean it up.
Yeah.
The town was supposed to be on top of that, and it did not happen.
You're correct, it did not.
That's what I'm talking about.
It did not happen, the answer should have happened.
Right.
You're right. There were, the follow-through by both parties was not good.
Uh-huh.
No question about it.
Okay, so we'll save it for another time.
And we, we didn't-
Thank you.
The boards did not do a thorough job at that, and everyone acknowledges that.
Thank you.
We don't want to make that mistake again. So, I'm sorry if I, it's frustrating, because we're just trying to help.
Right, right, I understand.
We're just trying to get enough information to have meaningful conversations with you folks. You know, roads and bridges are not subject to public hearings. We don't do that. I mean, you know, we closed the Miller Street Bridge for two years, I think. There was no public hearing, we didn't involve neighbors. We did this once before, Lake Street, because it was so unique, such a unique road, we invited all the neighbors. That was three years ago, and we still haven't fixed the darn road. Because we can't get anybody to agree to anything. So there are limits to where, you know, you can't just keep, I mean, I remember, we've had a lot of discussion on the design of the bridge, I think you would all agree. I mean, we had two full meetings talking about where the walkway would be, what the railing would be, how wide the road would be. We went through this in great detail with you folks. And, you know, some people wanted it on the north side. I'm sorry?
You never saw completed plans.
You saw the plans, we saw. I mean, we were all looking at the same thing.
They were not completely-
They were, I think, seventy-five percent engineered, if I recall. Seventy-five percent engineered.
Yeah, that was the last set we saw.
Which is the last we had. And so, but some people wanted the walkway on the right, some people wanted the walkway on the left. You remember that discussion? And, you know, you can only put a walkway on one side. And there was a reason why we ended up putting it on the side that we put, because we wouldn't interfere with the pond. I mean, that, and that was decided by another board, who said, we don't want to encroach on the wetlands, and by putting it on this side, we won't encroach on the wetlands. So, all of those decisions, while it may contradict with what someone wants, are part of the process of other people being involved and giving us the good information that we need on how to do this right. And we'll never get to a complete consensus for what everybody wants, but we'll come as close as we can. But bridges, it's not like a school where you can design, or, you know, you can have influence in how big the room is, or how, you know, and I'm exaggerating. But on a bridge, a bridge has to have certain structural-based requirements. And we have to rely on engineers, and I believe this is established at seventy-five tons? I think, you know, I mean, we need the bridge to be able to sustain a heavy truck, multiple heavy trucks, if you will. And so, we need to be sure that the engineering meets those, actually, it's the state guidelines. So we have to follow the state guidelines. So, those are non-negotiable items for us. So they influence what we can and we can't do. And all that has to be part of it. So we'll know more on the fourteenth. We'll have the chiefs in, and we'll have a good debate on it. And, you know, the only thing I would ask is that we restrict the discussion to what we have authority over, which is the bridge and the causeway. We're not, we have no authority, or are we going to intervene in another board's authority in terms of what they have oversight on? But bridge and causeway are fair game.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Sorry if I got a little reactive, but, you know, we've all spent a lot, more time than you know, you know, just trying to work through this and be as sensitive as we can to the needs of the neighbors, trying very hard.
David Mash, twenty-six Lawrence Street. I just want to make sure I'm just correct, but are there, are there two grants, one for the bridge and one for the causeway?
There are, there are, there are two grants, yes. One grant is for half a million dollars, which is specifically for the bridge. That grant, we've been applying for for year after year, probably four or five years. Give or take. But it's not the first time we've applied for that grant. There's a second grant, which is, I think, one point three, one point four?
One point eight.
One point eight, sorry. One point eight million, that would involve the causeway as well. So combined, we have, do the math, two point three million dollars to the bridge and the causeway.
Because when I was reading online about the causeway grant, that includes the causeway, it talked about high-density population, and that would include, the reason for that grant would be because of Abbeville. If I had read that, correct. So, if that grant is, you know, because of Abbeville, creating that density, then Abbeville is part of the conversation?
No, that is not correct.
Okay, so then what I-
You're correct in what facilitated the grant, yes. You want to?
Yeah.
You are correct that facilitated the grant, but now it becomes detached. If Abbeville, whether it goes forward or doesn't go forward, at this point, our understanding is it does not impact the grant.
Okay.
I don't know how else to say it.
It allowed us to apply for the grant because of the, because of the dense development? And if you look at the answer that we sent out to the DEP and the protest challenger, I guess I'm forgetting the right word, the grant, the development, the Abbeville development allowed us to apply for the grant. We were awarded the grant. Now, as Jim said, if the, if Abbeville is denied, or if Abbeville is changed through the ZBA process, well, we've already been awarded the grant. The state, state has told us they're not going to take it back from us. But we'll see. Because we don't enter into a contract with them until we award the bid. So we, we opened the bids on Thursday, we'll come back to this board on the fourteenth. At that point, we may or not be ready to award the grant. Once we award that grant, we'll also go into a contract with the state. The state will then review the whole process. If, I've been told that they are comfortable with the process we've gone through, because, you know, you look at all these grants historically, what they're looking for is to, in their terms, unlock development. And so, clearly, that site is one that needs, that is ripe for development in the, in the state's term, in the state's eye. That's why they approved it as a forty-B. So I guess I'm kind of rambling beyond my point, but as Jim said, that the ability for us to apply for that grant was, was because of Abbeville. But now that we've been awarded the grant, there's no longer a linkage between Abbeville and the, and the, and the bridge project.
So you're confident that if Abbeville, Abbeville doesn't pass, per se, that the state will come back on and say, well, that's not there now, that density is that there, it's not needed because of the amount of travel is less? I mean, I'm just, I mean-
I'm as confident as I can be, but I can't, I'm not going to guarantee that.
We have been told that, but we're dealing with the state.
Can we get it in writing from the state?
We do not. We do not have it in writing from the state.
That would be much more reassuring to me as a taxpayer, to get that in writing from the state.
But let me put it this way. We're not, we're not going to accept a grant as a, how should I word this? I want to word it carefully. We're not, we're not going to take the money and promise that we're going to approve a project that we don't want. So i- if you're linking the two in terms of our using the money, that's not going, not going to occur. If Abbeville goes away and the state takes away the grant, so be it.
And they were fully, when Jay Ash, Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, came into this room and gave us that grant, he was fully aware that the Abbeville had not been fully permitted.
No, I understand that, but unfortunately, you know, sometimes politicians do change their minds, and other things occur. Just having things in writing, just-
Well, if they don't give us the grant, then we, then we won't be able to-
Right, I mean-
Award the project.
No, I'm just saying, I just, I always like things in writing. I always feel that writing is always much more secure.
We would agree, but in, and even then, sometimes we're a little shaky with the state when we do get it in writing, with all due respect to the state. We have it in writing that we're going to get prison mitigation money every year, and we don't. So, you know, I mean, it is what it is. If we don't get the check, we don't go forward with the project, because it's a tied process.
Okay.
And so, you know, we can't spend what we don't have. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted this bid, is we want to look at the different components of the bid. In other words, you know, if we can only do partial, if we only have the half a million, what can we do for a half a million? So all of that is information we need to know, so that we can be prepared to go one way or the other.
Okay.
If we don't get it, we don't get it.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I hope we do, because our major concern is, is public safety. That's really the focus of this. And we're very concerned about that bridge. You know, Abbeville's not the only development up there. There's another development with Howard Bailey that's going on up there as well. And that's before the planning board. And that's just a standard, I believe it's a standard, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a standard plan, which is within our zoning, and he has every right to develop. So we have that issue as well, so-
He issues the water. Abby's bringing the water.
Correct.
He can't, he can't exist without Abby.
Wait, well-
Well, he'll be funding part of the water as well.
He'll be funding part of that as well.
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying, the main, the main bringing is-
That's, that's, this gentleman sits on the planning board, maybe he can fill you in on the things, but for as far as we're concerned, one is not tied to the other. I mean, we want to get water up there anyway. I mean, we've had two streets that I'm aware of in my tenure that we had polluted wells. One was on Stillwell, and the other was on my street, Frederickson, where an oil tank broke and seeped down and ruined several neighbors' wells. And we had to get town water down because people couldn't use their wells. That can happen anytime, anyplace, anywhere. And so, we try to get pub, we try to have access to public water every chance we get. I mean, that's just a public safety issue to us that's very significant. Our water system was, was-
Not to mention fire suppression.
Huh? Not to mention fire suppression, right.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so, so that's high on our priority list. Whether you hook up or not, I mean, I'm on Frederickson Road, and I have not hooked up. But if my well failed or was contaminated, I have, it's there. It's the end of my street, and I can get it. And that's really, really important. And the only way we can get it up there is through that bridge. It's the only way. So, it's been a priority for us for some years, and we've just not had any funding to be able to do that, other than take some concrete and make sure it doesn't fall down.
You'd bring water up to Brett Spire Road in Framing Meadow?
Uh, you know, I, I can't tell you specifically what the plan will be, but we got to get it across the bridge. That much we know, that much we know. We can't bring it anywhere unless we get it across the bridge. And we, and that's one of our big hopes, is that if we can do nothing else, that we can get that done. But to get it any further, you got to dig up the road. So, all of those things come into play. So, we're trying, we're, we're trying. We're not ignoring your issues, believe me. But it, it, we need information, we need data. There, there's too much misinformation around this whole project. And we, we, at least in terms of the bridge and the causeway, we want to deal with specifics. And then we can have a good conversation about what might or might not happen. And, and as I said, there'll be no acceptance of a bid until this board chooses to vote, and we're not going to meet again until the fourteenth. So, it's, it, nothing's going to happen before we have that conversation. Oh, you're welcome. I, I, believe me, I, I'm sorry I kind of went on there, but it, it does get frustrating for both of us. You know, that, I understand your frustrations, but it's, it's not like we're ignoring the issues. We're not. And, and we're just, we're trying. You know, we all live here, too. We're trying, and, and we're, it's complicated. And just, there has been so much misinformation about this that at least from my perspective, I don't want that to continue in terms of what we can or cannot do with that bridge. I, I want good data. I think that's reasonable. So, thank you for coming in. I'm sure we'll see you on the fourteenth.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So, speaking of Lake Street, we did have someone else on Lake Street today. We had, uh-
Speaking of the-
DPW did some, uh, they brought a grader down. It's trying to get rid of some of the sinkholes and et cetera. Just to level, level it off and try and make it workable again. What Bob is hoping to do, and we did, we, we received some pushback from Mr. McCormick through our, through legal teams. He's concerned that we're going outside the, the boundaries of the road. We argue that, you know, we're just cleaning up and naturally occurring on the dirt road, naturally occurring leaves, and you're going to get some growth kind of shrinking the road, and we're just trying to get back to the, the boundaries of the road. And believe me, we're not going out to trees and all that stuff. We're just trying to clean up the road. So, I think we got through that. Bob and I and, and our insurance attorney are going to meet with Mr. McCormick tomorrow morning to just kind of talk about continuing to go forward. What Bob would like to do at this point is, we still have litigation ongoing regarding our ability to, to fully develop the road. And we're working through that. We hope to have some discussions about that tomorrow. But in the meantime, we'd also like to have some discussions about what, what Bob has proposed doing is putting a asphalt binder down, just in the, about a twelve-foot binder down in the, in the middle of the road. Just to try and-
Doesn't take any trees down?
No trees, just, and, yeah, no, and no asphalt outside of the, obviously, it's, you know, you got a fourteen to sixteen-foot dirt area. He's trying to put a twelve-foot road down the middle. Just to maintain some level of, uh, consistency there and, and avoid all of the, you know, if you've, if, I don't know if you've ever been down Lake Street? Safety, just keeping the, the ruts from developing and, and having us go out every month or two with more material and continuing to- So, he's just trying to, he thinks this is one step forward. And then, he, he would do it in such a way that he'd be able to, I mean, keep that, um, that material as part of the binder going forward when we go out to the sixteen-foot road that we've talked about or whatever the, the final width is in the, in the long term. So, I think it was, I thought it was a good approach. Hopefully, we'll be able to get through this next step, just to try and stabilize that, that area, so.
Wasn't the injunction over trees?
Yeah, the injunction was over trees. So, Mr. McCormick had talked about having possibly invoking a second injunction.
To prevent us from fixing the road beyond?
Yes. He still argues that we don't own the road, so.
I thought town meeting resolved that.
Town meeting did, although he says there's still some, still, there's some legal, he's still challenging that legal-
I think that was me. I have no idea why, no clue.
The other issue was the, uh, so the advisory board is meeting tomorrow night. They have a, a request from Mr. Hafner, our facilities manager, on behalf of the school to, for a fifty thousand dollar request to be able to go forward with the SBAB, emergency repair, or the, it's not emergency repair, but the rapid repair.
No.
So, the roof of the H L-
Take the time to phone that.
Roof, the roof at the H All Day needs to be, uh, needs to be replaced. And we had an estimate a couple of years ago, not a full architectural estimate, but we had an estimate by some roofing companies. That would be about one point three million dollars. So, the school applied for SBAB money. So, we would receive fifty-three percent of the funds from the state to, to resolve that problem. The process happens is the, the school writes a letter of interest into the state. They then approve it. You then have sixty days to, to show that you've got funding in place for, to hire an OPM and an architect for the first step of designing a resol, resolution. The state has told us that that will be between fifty and sixty thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars for an OPM and thirty-five to forty-five thousand dollars for an architect to, to come and design a roof. Matt was, working with Todd Lindmark, kind of settled on keeping that number at thirty-five thousand dollars as the request from the, the advisory committee because they've only got seventy-five thousand dollars in place, and certainly don't want to drain that fund anymore than we have to. But we also, we only have sixty days, so that, that expires at the end of August to be able to prove to the MSBA that we have that money in place. So, that's why that's, you know, they approve us at the end of June. They've now gone to the school committee, they said, yes, they want to go forward. And now they're coming forward to try and get the funding in place. It's, seems like, and then, and then they have until the spring town meeting to get the full funding in place for, to pay for us, if we continue to go forward with this, to pay the forty-seven percent. So, we either borrow the money or come up with the money from some other source. One thing that, that Matt told me today was that, that estimate has gone up. The one point three million, one to one point three million dollar estimate that was about two years ago has gone up because of the change in the base code of the, of the building.
And the stretch code.
And then, as well as adding on, us adding on the addition of the stretch code. And this is information he's getting from the architect, so I'm taking it for what it's worth. And so, now those estimates are going up from the one to one point three million dollar range to the one point seven to two million dollar range. So, good news is, the MSBA will pay for, well, should pay for fifty-three percent of it, but bad news is our forty-seven percent is still fifty to seventy-five percent higher than it would have been.
Have we gotten the funding back from the Freeman Kennedy?
We still have not gotten back the funding from the Freeman Kennedy.
Any reason why?
No, a lot of turnover at the MSBA over the last couple of years, and-
That's about nine hundred thousand, isn't it?
It's about nine hundred thousand dollars, so hopefully that will, uh-
Which is part of what we plan on using to cover the forty-seven percent.
Yeah.
So, they owe us about nine hundred thousand dollars.
How long has that been going on for?
My daughter is now graduated from high school. She was in the last class that graduated from the sixth grade at the Freeman Centennial School. So, about, if you figure-
Six years.
Six years.
To say that they move slowly?
Yeah, I mean, so, so the project, so the project, so six years ago, two thousand eighteen, two thousand twelve, the project finished. The, the substantial completion, there's still a year of, you know, cleanup and punch lists and stuff like that. Then there's about a year of audit. So, you would expect normally that we would get funding back within two years.
That should have been two thousand sixteen.
Should have been two thousand sixteen.
So, we're two years-
Or in fifteen, yeah.
We're going into the second year, longer than we ever should have taken.
Yeah. Todd Hassett, who's a very experienced business manager, working with the school, has, he's been spearheading, applying, getting the money. And, you know, there's a lot, there's a, there's an incredible amount, as you can imagine. So, it's taking, the, the project, and the project manager didn't help us. The project manager on the school at the end was, we didn't give him a good grade, we'll leave it at that. And he, he didn't help us with the financial reconciliations as well as he should have. Todd, who is a business manager and town accountant for, he's been in many towns as a consultant, as well as been a full-time business manager in, in Rentham, and in, in, in fact, he was the finance director in Wellesley for a number of years. He's, uh, very good at his job. He's been managing that work with the MSBA and doing the reconciliations. You know, it's, it's, it's taking each contractor payment process. It, you know, it comes to the committee, the local committee, they approve it. That, they send it off to the, through the project manager, the MSBA. The MSBA cuts a check to pay for their fifty-three percent, in Norfolk's case. And then, but then they withhold a lot. They have, withhold ten percent for, um,
Continu-
Retainage. And then, they pay that back at the end of the process. But they also hold back anything else that they're, through their audit, they're challenging. So, then we have to go prove that, you know, all the costs were legitimate and fall under the MSBA guidelines. So, that's what that year kind of is after a project is done, is going through all those challenges and making sure that they're, they're approved. So, they literally have for three years now agreed on the number that they're going to pay us, but they just haven't paid us. We've had legislatures helping to try and speed up the process. They're under the treasurers, they're under the executive branch, and they're not directly under the legislative branch.
And I think we were one of the first projects under the new administration.
Yeah, and that's part of the process, problem.
They changed the, the process, SBAB, between DHL and D A and Freeman Kennedy. It was a whole new system, a whole new process. And we've somewhat victimized by sort of first in. And in, in defense of them, I, I think that's been a part of the complication. And they have had a lot of turnover. So, there hasn't been any, every time somebody changes or leaves, they got to start over. But it is frustrating because it's a good sum of money.
And like I said, I put a good chunk of the blame on our project manager for making it not quite as smooth as it could have been. So, having said that, I wanted to give you the heads up that we're applying for fifty thousand dollars for the H All Day roof through the advisory board. Also, what kind of came up last week as a result of some of our discussions was that the energy committee went out and sought bids for an energy consultant to do the audit. Well, the, the one that they would like to award to, and, and the bid came in at almost just under ten thousand dollars.
Ninety-three hundred.
Ninety-three hundred dollars. It's not just under, so ninety-three hundred dollars. So, I'm a little concerned about going to the advisory, and, and we don't have it on their agenda, the timing didn't work out. But we'd have to go to the advisory board and ask for ninety-three hundred dollars from them. So, A, do we want to, A, do we want to do that right now with them already potentially giving up fifty out of their seventy-five thousand dollars? The energy committee is under the gun to try and get this audit done in August so that they can go forward with the next steps of, uh, trying to become a green community.
So, the concern is, it's the beginning of the fiscal year, and using up those resources, that significant percentage of almost all the resources between those two-
Yeah, we've never-
Projects.
We've never dug into the advisory committee-
We've never spent fifty.
Funds that much, yeah.
Totally. But we will get the forty or fifty back.
Right, I mean-
But it won't be until the fall town meeting.
Yeah, if, if we so choose a town meeting, we can transfer money back into the advisory committee through a transfer at the fall town meeting, so.
Because we'll have certified free cash.
Yeah. So, you know, so they'll, so I guess our, our options are, A, not fund it, and then tell the advisory, tell the energy committee to wait. We can go to the advisory committee and, and ask for the ten thousand, although we probably have to ask, because it's not on the agenda, we'll have to ask them to meet again early next week. Or, or ask them to go back and go through a process of, like we talked about, is having the auditors do that work at no fee. And then, you know, with the expectation, hope that they're going to get some of the work to do some of the rehab. Now, we got some kind of pushback from the MAPC, who's the Metropolitan Planning Council, who's working with us on this and working with all the communities on this, you know, kind of asking us why, why not just have the auditors do it for free? Because that's the process that'll, almost all the other towns are going through. So, you know, I know, it's, I, I, I agree with, you know, that conversation we had that, that it certainly just smells odd that somebody would do something for free, and then they would have every expectation that we're going to give them work in the future.
It's a quick program.
Right. So, I guess I'm asking for direction. Do you want to go through that process, or do you want to do one of the other? Just seeing if Rich, Rich was going to send me a list of other communities who've gone through that process.
Mr. Palumbo, you want to start?
You know, I think we can manage the, this, you know, to the seventy-five thousand if we have fall town meeting, as long as we can explain it to the residents of the town in terms of the reason why we chose One Direction in terms of paying for the service, the audit, instead of the free service. So, you know, if we still believe that that is the, the best approach, then, then I, I don't know that I would necessarily deviate from that.
Kevin?
I agree. I mean, in the worst-case scenario, the advisory board declines the request for the ninety-three hundred. And at that point, we could reassess if we wanted to go down the route of having somebody come and do it for no cost with the quick program that Jim and Alan before.
You have three agreements.
Okay, so ask the advisory committee for the, for the funds.
We, we have to, I mean, I, we have to go forward with this in one way or another. So, I, I, I agree. Are you unanimous?
Yep. So, we'll go forward if we can.
Does Todd have a, I think he does. Doesn't he have a, a sense of free cash?
You know, I don't like to share that number before it's-
No, but you know I always find it out.
Yeah, I know, yeah. And you may have more information than I have.
Actually, I think I do.
He has not given me a number, so.
Okay.
I do know that, uh, and I don't have the number in front of me, but that, that new growth came in substantially higher than expected. By a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand or so, so that was a good number.
Yep.
On the, on the downside, there was a, the assessors had to abate some kind of more taxes than they were expecting. So, obviously, we do an assessment on the board of assessors. Well, the assessor does, creates a value for every piece of property in town, and then there's a process that you can go through to, to challenge that, and the board of assessors can decide whether or not to abate some of their taxes or not. There was actually an error made where some of the solar panels on, um, one of the business structures, I think, I, I think it's Joffram, but I'm not positive, was double counted. So, it was both in the personal property taxes as well as in the real estate taxes. So, the, the assessors obviously were, voted to abate that.
Didn't they have, didn't they have about a hundred and twenty-five thousand reserves on that?
No, this year we're laying at seventy-five thousand. And, and the, um, the total of abatements, including that, that error, which was a big number, which was about fifty thousand dollars.
So, town's got to move something.
Eighty thousand dollars, so. So, we're laying a little bit of a, a hole in the tax abatements. But the good news is, Todd said, all the residential home assessments went very well. A lot of property values had risen. I think some, uh, open space property, those, those evaluations that, that kind of drive the whole database, John had brought some of those up, uh, undeveloped property. He'd brought those up to a fair number. And then, and there was very little challenge to those, to those numbers. So, that was, that was very good to get through that process. We have a new hire in the DPW. He's, uh, you know, one of his functions is the, the water superintendent, but he's also acting as kind of number two in the, in the department for, for Bob. Barry, and I, I'll butcher his last name, so I won't even say it, begins with an L. Barry comes with a lot of experience, both in the municipal world, working in Bellingham, as well as with one of the engineering firms, working with a lot of towns on their stormwater resolutions and, you know, with their NIFTs permits.
He's got a great resume.
Yeah, which is something that's important for us as we, in the next year, when our stormwater permit will be renewed. So, through the DEPE and EPA, we, we get a stormwater permit, so we have to, um, you know, oversees all of our stormwater drainage and, and the culverts and how we monitor all that, the pollution in those. And so, that permit is being renewed this year, and it'll be great having Barry in place to help us with, to go through that process. And there will be some expense, I don't want to bore you with details or scare you, but there will be some expense related to that process as well. Just because in the new permit, we're going to have to increase our monitoring of stormwater drainage and outfalls and probably redo some culverts and-
That, that MS four, I mean, I haven't seen the legs in a long time, but the MS four.
Yeah, it's been, it's been stalled for about five years or so. It was supposed to come out a long time ago.
Well, they identified two towns to be like, you know, test cases that they would work collaboratively with.
Franklin was one of them.
Yeah, Franklin was one of them. Maybe Bellingham was Bellingham.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Back in my planning board days, Kevin, it was a while ago.
Stone Age, Jeff.
I know. So, that was all I had for tonight.
How about the permitting on the wells? How are we doing there? Anything new?
Still not finalized by the DEP. I asked Bob to, just yesterday, asked him to follow up with the DEP, try and figure out if they can-
No, no-
Nothing bad.
No, no glitches.
No. And we are going forward with the bonding on the, as you know, I think there's been some paperwork back and forth with you guys. We're going forward with the bonding to, for the construction of the well. So, we are, we, we have every reason to believe we're, we're moving forward with that. We still haven't, we haven't closed on the property. We've had some discussions about possibly doing that, but I think we'd, I'd feel more comfortable waiting for the DEP approval before we finalize on that property.
I, I gave you guys, I asked Mr. Langdon, who handles a man of many hands, to give me an update on outstanding issues. He couldn't cover them in the meeting because most of them are involved with union contracts or litigation. But he will provide that on a regular basis if there are any changes. But each of you have a copy of that, just so that you're aware of what's on his plate and what the status is. We've got a couple of interesting issues that he's working through. One with the fire department will be most interesting to see how that shakes out.
Yeah, as OSHA gets more involved with the fire department.
Yep.
Over time, that'll be, we're going to meet tomorrow on that.
I had some conversation with him about it two weeks ago. I just, I have to be a-
It's, it's an interesting one.
Side of the bands.
Anything else before we go to executive session? Jack?
Nope, I'm going to, I'm going to be out August eighth and ninth, just bringing my, my young daughter up to college. On the thirteenth, I'll be off to the Bubba Strong con, golf tournament.
Is UNH ready?
I don't know. I'm ready.
That's a terrible thing to say. Hope your daughter's not watching. Kevin, anything?
Sir?
Jeff? Sue, did we miss anything? I don't think, uh-
No, we got everything.
Okay. Thank you for joining us. We are going to go into an executive session regarding litigation associated with Running Gun. There will be no votes taken, and we will not return to an open session. May I have a vote, a call vote?
Jeff Palumbo, aye.
Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Jim Leehan, aye. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Our next meeting is August 14th, which I suspect if you've been with us all evening, you'll know will be lively, which is a good thing. There's nothing wrong with that. So, I hope everybody enjoys what is hopefully a good summer for everyone, and be safe. Thank you.